I am Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach. And I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM on this eighth day of February 2022. Pursuant to the School Board's 2021-22 reopening plan adopted August 10th and the School Board vote on August 24th of this year regarding health protocols for School Board meetings, it's determined physical distancing will be used in chambers as a health mitigation strategy. Members of the public will also be able to observe the School Board meeting as always through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. So we welcome those present with us today as well as our viewing and listening public. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please take attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. I ask now all those present to please join me in a moment of silence. And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
All right, so we begin with our student, employee, and public awards and recognition. I turn the program over to Vice Chair Mrs. Melnick.
Tonight, we as the Board are pleased to announce the School Board recognition recipient for February 8, 2022. Mrs. Manning.
This evening, we would like to recognize Kevin Fields from Frank W. Cox High School on being recognized by the American String Teachers Association, or ASTA, as having the best state chapter website. To receive this award, ASTA reviews the state-level websites which aim to highlight honor and positively represent string teachers and string programs within their state. Mr. Fields' award-winning site can be found by visiting vastaweb.org. Currently, Mr. Fields is in his fourth year with the Division and as the Orchestra Director and the Triumph Music Honor Society sponsor at Cox. Kevin graduated with degrees in both psychology and music education with a true desire to help people and make a difference. However, while in college, he also began building websites. So when the state chapter needed a website redesign, he volunteered to take on this project. Mr. Field lists his favorite part of teaching orchestra is that students from all different backgrounds can easily join, participate, and thrive in orchestra, especially in VBCPS. And although Mr. Fields initially hated orchestra when he started his journey in fifth grade, by middle school, he was certain that it was his destiny. Mr. Fields encourages anyone who wants to follow a similar career path, contact teachers of all different levels, and ask to observe or get in a classroom to substitute. He says that music education is so important because it allows a dive deep into cultures, history, communication skills, and team building. Mr. Fields, we are honored to recognize you this evening. Congratulations on a fantastic job well done.
Up next, we would like to recognize Sarah McGee from Plaza Middle School. She was recently named Orchestra Director of the Year through the Virginia Chapter of the American String Teachers Association. Ms. McGee has served more than 25 years as an orchestra teacher in Virginia Beach, seven years at Independence Middle School, and 18 years at Plaza. During her tenure, she has taught, led, influenced, and inspired thousands of students, many of whom continued with orchestra due to her compassion, kindness, and positivity. Ms. McGee says her favorite part about teaching middle school orchestra is watching the growth in the students over their time in the program. Initially, they are trying to figure out the instruments and themselves. By the time they are in eighth grade, they feel like the class is a family, and they start to really play musically and often extremely well. Although Ms. McGee says she knew that she always wanted to be involved in music, she never saw herself becoming a teacher. She didn't think she would have the patience for the profession. However, a quarter of a century later, she not only succeeds in her role, she thrives. Ms. McGee's advice to others who may want to become a teacher or get involved in music is to always, always, above everything else, be kind, both to others and yourself. Remember to be patient and understanding, and try to never take yourself too seriously. Thank you for your continued hard work, Ms. McGee. We know your students appreciate your dedication, and we sincerely thank you. Congratulations again on this tremendous accomplishment.
As we conclude this evening, we have the honor of recognizing Ms. Corbin Pinto from Salem High School. Recently, Ms. Pinto was named the Virginia Music Educator of the Year through the Virginia Music Educators Association. Ms. Pinto has been teaching with the School Division for 18 years and has been at Salem High School for the past three. Currently, she is the Vocal Strand Director for the Visual and Performing Arts Academy, where she teaches the Academy Choral Ensemble, Vocal Techniques, and the Vocal Senior Synthesis Case. She is also the lead teacher for the Salem High School Music Professional Learning Community. Ms. Pinto says she loves the power of using vocal music to lead and encourage her students as they experience different time periods, cultures, and ideas through making music. She feels choral music is truly the unique opportunity for personal growth and collaborative skills. Ms. Pinto's affection for music began as early as the sixth grade. When attending Lynn Haven Middle School, she turned into a report titled "How to Be a Musician." Once in college, she also discovered her love of conducting music. In her almost 20 years as a teacher, she can confidentially say that life experiences and knowledge that comes from these experiences will only help you to be a much better and more confident teacher, and overall, a kinder and more empathetic person. Ms. Pinto's advice to those who may want to be a teacher or work in the music profession: Ask for help and experience as much of life as possible. Congratulations, Ms. Pinto, for an amazing job well done on this fantastic accomplishment. The Division is lucky to have you as a teacher and a mentor for your students.
This concludes the recognitions for this meeting. Thank you.
No, it doesn't. And now, Mrs. Franklin, if you would, before you read that, please, Ms. Toni Otto, if
Okay. I am so honored to be able to read this resolution for VSB A School Board Clerk Appreciation Week for February 2022. Whereas School Board clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas School Board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the School Board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas School Board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school because of his/her county or city as may be required by the School Board, and whereas School Board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the School Board and Superintendent, and whereas School Board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending School Board meetings, and whereas School Board clerks join with School Boards to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential, and whereas School Board clerks provide an invaluable service for School Board members and superintendents, the VSB A Board of Directors, thus hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach joins the VSB A in recognizing the many and varied contributions of School Board clerks. Now, therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach also recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this Board.
And now, Madam Chair, that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. And if I may note that our deputy clerk, Mrs. Kype, is not with us this evening, but we'll be following up with her separately.
And I would just like to add, Madam Chair, that without Ms. Kype, she does make my job a lot easier, and we do work very well together. So this appreciation is not only for me, but for also her. So, thank you.
Okay, so now we are to the adoption of the agenda. Any modifications? Okay, Mrs., I see Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Anderson. So, Mrs. Hughes.
Okay, I would like to separate Item C from the consent agenda, please.
Give us a moment to get to the consent. You want to state what it is?
It's an item that I'm going to need to abstain from, and I'd like to be able to vote on the rest of the consent.
Or I see Recommendation of General Contractor?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you.
A second on that? Oh, okay. And Mrs. Anderson.
As we discussed earlier in workshop, I'd like to add Item under Information, an Item D, which would be more information about masks, masking. We discussed earlier that we might need to follow up on that, and I'd like to add that so that the public can be here for that as well, or the majority of the public.
A second on that? Request, Mrs. Riggs? I didn't...
Well, you know how we had the update earlier?
No, no, I'm wondering, is there any que... This is a second agenda request, just to let you know where we're at. We noted it would be either brought up again, Information, or Workshop. I did approach Mrs. Lanetti in the break, who said she's willing to present again just the information on the two court rulings in the context of an information session.
Well, I would also like Dr. Salter to do his part, where he talked, or maybe it was Mr. Freeman, I'm not sure. Maybe we just need the update. I think it was just the part on the masking that we needed, and the update for the public to hear how it's going in the past two weeks, that type of thing.
Let me clarify, Madam Chair. Do you want, I don't think you voted on Mrs. Hughes.
Yeah.
So do you want to, you could combine them together.
That's what I thought.
That Mrs. Hughes's request to move, it's 14C, 1 and 2, Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Okay, so you've moved 14C, 1 and 2 to Action, is that correct? And then Mrs. Anderson's request to add to the Information Agenda 12D, you can combine them together, otherwise you didn't vote on Mrs. Hughes's motion.
I just seconded prematurely.
Can combine them? Hughes is agreeable.
So that would make the motion on the floor. The motion to adopt the agenda, you would ask to amend it to change 14C, 1 and 2 to be 15B, and Mrs. Anderson's request that you add to the Information 12D for more information concerning masking, that would be the one motion you'd be voting on now for both your adoption to dinner.
Correct.
Would there be any other amendments to the agenda that you want to combine, or you should be, I just want to make sure you brought on both of those.
Okay, is everyone clear? Again, Consent Agenda, C is being moved to 15B, Action, and above that, Information, and added Item D to continue and in some cases, repeat the previous COVID discussion.
Now, do you need a second?
So who's the motion, is it?
So let's start again with...
It was Mrs. Hughes.
Mrs. Hughes.
And you're combining them, so why don't I just suggest to do Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Anderson, since you're both on it.
Hughes and Anderson, and we did have a second, Ms. Riggs.
All right, then. All in favor, show a raised hand.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. The amended agenda did pass.
Thank you. All right, that, we move to approval of the meeting minutes, and we have two sets of minutes, starting with the January 20, 2022 Special School Board Meeting. Any modifications? Okay, hearing then, all, oh, yes, ma'am.
I sent an email to both you and the clerk, Ms. Toni Otto. I can't remember if my change was on the 20th or 25th.
It was on the 20th, and the, those minutes were resent to the School Board members and reposted to the public with your name highlighted in the January 20th.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the Board knew of the change, since it was just sent out. It was just, I was missing on the attendance part of that agenda, so that would just be the only change.
All right, so now the Chair will entertain a motion to approve, Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Franklin. Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And to now be the January 25th, 2022 Regular School Board Meeting. Any modifications to these minutes? All right, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Mrs. Hughes, and a second, Mrs. Anderson. All in favor, show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. That leads us to the public comment portion of the meeting. The School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K to 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the clerk prior to noon today. Persons not called to the podium to address the Board are asked to be respectful of speakers so that the Board and persons observing the meeting are able to hear and observe each speaker's comments. Persons signed up to speak will be called up three at a time. We ask that you do line up when your name is called. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by student speakers participating, excuse me, in-person student speakers will be called first, followed by student speakers participating through Zoom or by telephone. After the student speakers, in-person speakers will be called, followed by speakers participating through Zoom. Each is asked to begin speaking once their name is called. As a reminder, speakers have three minutes to present and will be given a 30-second warning before time expires. The speaker should refer to the online time tracker if you wish to keep track of your time. Once your time has expired, we ask that you cease your remarks, leave the podium to allow the next speaker to come forward. Speakers are responsible for being in chambers or online when they're called to speak. If a speaker is not present when called to speak, or not online, or able to unmute, the Board may, at its sole discretion, allow the speaker to speak at the end of the public comment session. Members of the audience will not be recognized to assist an online speaker with making online comments. So we, the Board will suspend public comments at 8:00 PM to hold the information session of the meeting agenda, and will return to public comments prior to the consent and action sessions. The Board, as always, advises the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please introduce our first speaker of the evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first student speakers are Gianluca Thanh, Kenza Zutoni, and Benjamin Betwain.
Good evening, VBCPS School Board. COVID-19 has become so political that I truly believe we all have lost sight of what battling the pandemic even means. Our main goal should be combating COVID. Republican, Democrat, Independent, we should be all able to agree on a livelihood that combats the pandemic. We've all been in this pandemic for two years. We all can agree we are tired. We can all agree we may have known of someone, or even been related to someone who might have had COVID, might have been hospitalized, or even has died. It's not ideal that I have to be in school with a mask, that's the truth. Alternate schedules, no one lunch, and many things I truly miss about being a high schooler. But that is truly a sacrifice I have to make to keep my friends, my family, staff, and teachers safe. Optional mask-wearing would have made, was, would have made more sense if we weren't in the highest peak of COVID right now. Students who are unvaccinated, maybe because of their parents' decisions on the vaccines and immunocompromised students, are at risk more than they've already been. When we talk about the optional mask debate in schools, we sometimes forget that these students go home to siblings, parents, and even grandparents, putting them at risk as well despite the fact that we're supposedly safe in school with COVID mitigations. Optional mask-wearing on the high school level and middle school level is, from what I've seen, been able to hard to control. You can't always contact tracing the crowded, almost tight hallways as you're changing classes. Schools aren't necessarily enforcing the QR code during lunch to scan contact tracing if somebody gets COVID during lunch, and it's just, it's just hard to control from a high school perspective, from what I've seen. Like I said, the optional mask debate would have been more understandable, but we're seeing surges in COVID. Students beg, are begging the School Board to enforce better COVID-19 mitigations and mandatory masking. Contact tracing, masking, sanitation, and social distancing is so important to help to stop the spread and keep staff safe, too, and VBCPS families and teachers. Being safe and cautious of the pandemic isn't fear, nor is it a bad thing. It is to protect us. Please reconsider your decision on optional mask-wearing, even if this may go against the Governor's mandate. Please reconsider your decision.
30 seconds.
Also, happy School Board Appreciation Month. I appreciate all the School Board members who continue to listen and amplify the voices of students.
Our next speaker is Kenza Zutoni, then Benjamin Betwain, and Jana Staltziak.
Okay, and a friendly reminder to our audience to please refrain from applause. Thank you, and welcome to you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kenza Zutoni, and I urge the Board to follow the option to enforce masking for all students in school buildings. Seeing my peers unmasked, likely without consideration for the difficult positions that I put, like, teachers in, continues to shock me since Executive Order 2 went into effect. In all honesty, the lifting of mandates has been an enduring and inescapable source of anxiety in my life, as well as the lives of my peers and teachers, acting more as a violation of our right to feel safe while learning than a restoration of personal freedom to the minority of anti-maskers. It gives people a false sense of security and causes that lack in our enforcement, and students should be able to receive an education without the ever-present fear of getting sick. We must also consider the teachers, whose livelihoods are most affected. They shouldn't have to worry about exposures and extra safety precautions on top of their vital job. I can attest, masking is not a psychological stressor for us, nor does it disrupt learning. If anything, the real mental stress comes from inconsistent mask-wearing restrictions that apply to things like the buses or after-school activities, but not in the classrooms where we get packed back-to-back with other students. We all have a responsibility as potential asymptomatic carriers to not endanger the folks around us. If we have any hope of organizing for a better future, we must limit exposures and support those most vulnerable. The CDC warns that COVID cases will rise as a result of optional mask policies. So now is not the time to waver in your resolve. Allowing the optional policy to continue is complicity in future harm to our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Benjamin Betwain, and then Jana Staltziak.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ben Betwain. I am a senior at Cox High School, the SEA co-Vice President and the Citywide Vice Chair. I want to start off by personally thanking the School Board for allowing students from the district the opportunity to speak and make public comments at these meetings. I recognize the fact that the members of the administration look to their younger constituents and are willing to listen to them because they value their voices and because they value the well-being of their students, and I take an appreciable amount of gratitude in that provision. With that being said, as one student standing forward, I have to say this. Since January 25th of this year, I have not found myself to be at all comfortable at my own school. Going to school on that particular day, it had slipped my mind that the decision to implement the optional mask policy in Virginia Beach schools would commence on that following Monday. And at once, I was harshly made aware of this fact, and I was startled. As one student, I felt that my safety and well-being were being violated and my health was being compromised. As one student, as one example, my thoughts immediately shifted to my five-year-old brother and my mother, who is with underlying health conditions. Both of them currently stay at home, and they rely on me to prevent them from being sick while also obtaining my education. As one high school student, I find it unfair that I am being issued with a difficult set of circumstances such as this, and I find it unfair that I'm struggling to uphold the promise that I made to my family. So that is where my personal issues lie, and I hope that the Board is able to realize that this conflict is not just relative to my own situation, but to other afflicted students as well. Another thing I wanted to touch on during my speaking time is outside of my personal narrative and is aimed at the current reality of the situation. The fact of the matter is, is that the U.S., let alone the world, is not yet ready to throw away what professionals and experts have been carefully assessing and planning for out the window when we continue to combat a deadly pandemic. I understand there are quite a few dissenting opinions regarding the idea of mask-wearing, and while I respect that difference of opinions, I truly believe it is air, it is important to err on the side of caution, especially when people's lives are on the line. So while COVID-19 is running rampant, I strongly urge the School Board to make the appropriate decisions concerning the health and well-being of its students, staff, and the community at large. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jana Staltziak.
I can't choose whether or not I have narcolepsy, but I can choose if I wear a mask. I choose to because my doctor says and wrote a letter saying it is what I need to be safe. He also says I need to social distance, but you all say this discriminates against people that choose not to mask. At my school, it seems that at least 50% of the kids do not mask. And that's terrifying to me. So now I have to choose between putting myself at risk, or I have to give up my spot at the Advanced Technology Center for my own safety, as I would not be able to make it to class there if I had to go to virtual, fully virtual school. Who's being discriminated against? I shouldn't have to choose between my health and my happiness. Please institute universal masking. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last in-person student speaker. We will go to our online student speaker, Bria Eggers. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Bria. I'm in seventh grade. I'm a seventh-grade VBCPS student. I think that the decision about masking is unsafe and unfair. First of all, the new variant is extremely contagious and now spread mostly in schools. Second, CDC recommends a well-fitting K and 95 mask for all people, regardless of your vaccination status. Studies prove that masks do not protect unless everybody wears one. Also, this puts teachers in a very stressful, stressful position where they are not allowed to have an opinion and are exposed to hundreds of masked students. Also, there are students who are not following their parents' instruction, going to school masked, and taking advantage of the fact that nobody's allowed to say anything about their masking. Now they're discriminating against people who want to stay safe, and they call it discrimination against non-maskers. I think you should reconsider your decision for the safety of all students, teachers, and parents. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we'll move on to our in-person speakers. We will have Dan Chang, Kathleese Lindy, and then Paula Chang.
Welcome.
Hello, Ms. Rye. I'm speaking tonight on Black History Month because this month honors all people of color, yet speaks about all people as all are actually part of some minority. I'm a minority, the son of two immigrants who arrived in 1948, two non-English-speaking teenagers fleeing communist Mao. Both were thrilled to be here as their parents recognized opportunities available here in the United States and unavailable in their now former communist homeland. All who condemn our country should learn why people flee communist totalitarian regimes. My peasant paternal grandparents used their opportunity to be sure their son was educated and that he worked hard. Nine years after his arrival, their son... Nine years after his arrival, their son, my father, graduated from William and Mary and was commissioned in the United States Navy, rising to become the first naturalized Asian admiral in the Navy, not without some prejudice. It's not easy, and it never is. My parents raised me and my sister, never allowing us to be limited by race. We embraced and were proud of it, though I was often the only Asian in my school. I can honestly say I never felt prejudice. It existed, but I found myself accepted in dealing with all the same issues as my white and black friends. I owe much to my extraordinary, I'm owe, I owe much to my extraordinary parents and grandparents. They never passed on the negatives to me or my sister. My family story reminds me of one Mrs. Felton told about her mother, who worked hard to give a better world to her children and those around her. Mrs. Felton, in spite of any negatives you experienced, you had a life of abundant goodness that you tried to pass on from your mom to others. I deeply respect you. With that, I request that when speaking of minorities, that they not be spoken of in a manner that assumes a minority is oppressed. Honestly, that's offensive. My friends are minorities. They are not oppressed. Because one person of color, black, Asian, Hispanic, Middle Eastern, does not mean they are oppressed. That is frankly derogatory. Also, being white
Seconds.
does not make one advantage, and to assume so is wrong. As all people carry with them equal weight of life as do their non-white peers. Mrs. Felton, I request that when you and this board mention a list of students as racial groups, you mention those white students, who I believe you all care about. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, then Paula Chang, then Amber Thompson.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, Dr. Spence and staff. My name is Kathleen Slindy, and I am president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I want to begin by thanking you for your service and the work that you do for, to support our public schools. I do not think you hear this enough. Tonight, I am addressing the school calendar and the proposed change in the middle school schedule. First, the calendar. Now that the high school's flexible four-by-four schedule has been adopted, the calendar needs to include two staff days at the semester change. Teachers of the four-by-four classes will essentially be starting a new year with the semester change in January. They will need two staff days to facilitate the turnaround. Please ask that these be included. Perhaps differentiating the calendar for staff needs as we differentiate instruction for students may be the way to do this. Second, the schedule change. The proposed change in middle school schedule purports to ease staff shortages by having middle school teachers teach five classes while also cutting teacher planning time in half. This eliminates common planning time for core teachers and it creates additional work with less support. This will not lead to keeping or attracting staff. The plan also discards the team model currently used at middle school. The team model creates a school within a school, which supports the sixth graders transitioning from elementary and prepares seventh and eighth graders for the high school transition. Additionally, educators who work on each team have a set of students in common and can successfully communicate with students and parents to solve problems. The schedule change also cuts out the Core Bells, which are the thirty-minute blocks when students can receive extra help to do makeup work and use resources. Lastly, the impact on special education where we already have critical shortages may be compounded, may compound the problem rather than ease it. This proposed schedule change has little chance to help with staff shortages, but will dismantle the model that has contributed to many of the successes seen in our division. In conclusion, we need to increase educator voice in problem-solving in order to increase retention and to attract others to Virginia Beach. Involving the people who work with students daily in problem-solving and decision-making processes would give better results for students and for educators. In the movie The Field of Dreams, the main character whispers, or has it whispered, "If you build it, they will come." For BBCPS, the whisper should be, "If we build it, they will come, and more importantly, they will stay." Involving your employees and planning the changes that will build a better learning and work environment is a win-win. We live where others come to vacation. Surely, we can attract more educators and additional support professionals to come and work here if we listen to what they need and want. Collective gardening has done this in other divisions. Please listen to the input from many stakeholders who have written to you. Ask for calendar that includes two workdays at the semester change, and ask for a better plan to address staff shortages that does not dismantle what is valued and is working for students and educators. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang, Amber Thompson, and then Tara Chang.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to first honor Black History Month and, um, and also, I'm going to be speaking on largely a personnel issue, but not about the person who is the subject of the personnel issue. I remind this board of the nineteen sixty-four case New York Times versus Sullivan, where free speech won, and I'm telling you now that my attorney is watching to make sure my rights are upheld from the First Amendment. During a recent special meeting regarding redistricting, we learned much, that the board may be interpreted as trying to block new candidates, that citizens can actually speak at the special meetings if the school board allows it, and that Mrs. Anderson insists on following the law. Good job, Mrs. Anderson. One would assume that to be the case, but I understand your concerns, Mrs. Anderson, when we look at some of the actions of this board. Case in point. On January twenty-fifth, Speaker Sarah Gerloff attempted to legally state factual information about a Virginia code regarding any school superintendent in the Commonwealth in the process by which they may seek additional outside employment legally. It's called vacancy in office. It's Code twenty-two-point-one-dash-sixty-six. It states, "The office of any division superintendent shall be deemed vacant upon his engaging in any other business or employment during his term of office as such superintendent, unless such superintendent was granted prior permission and approval by the school board to seek additional employment." Mrs. Gerloff then pointed out that Superintendent Spence does have a consulting firm, Edge and Navigate, for which he had not received prior permission from the board in a manner consistent with Code twenty-two-point-one-dash-six-point-sixty-six. She is correct. I requested the permission, that permission to be given to me to see if it was given to him last year via the Freedom of Information Act. I have it here from your own Freedom of Information Act officer that that permission has never been granted for Edge and Navigate. In response to this, Mrs. Gerloff, to Mrs. Gerloff, Ms. Lynetti speciously declared Mrs. Gerloff's remarks to be a personal attack on Dr. Spence. It was not an attack. It was a statement of fact. Mrs. Rye did not deny the speaker was correct, but stated that this issue had already been dealt with. It has not. Mrs. Rye then used this personal attack narrative to shut off the microphone, deny Mrs. Gerloff her First Amendment rights, and deny the public legal knowledge of what has been going on with the school board and Dr. Spence in a question of how the law has been followed. Miss Anderson, you must be appalled. Except that you're not, because this has happened before.
Thirty seconds.
Dr. Spence previously earned money without board approval through AASI, AASA, but when one school member pointed this out and made an issue of this, the board, under the leadership of the very law-abiding Miss Anderson, voted with the excuse that the, his earnings were not significant, to go around the law and gave permission for Superintendent Spence to continue with AASI, ignoring his past employment. So how do you, Mrs. Anderson, get to decide what laws we follow, and are you now going to ask the school board to uphold the law?
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amber Thompson, Tara Chang, and then Thomas Grant.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'd first like to address decorum of school board members in line with the recent governance committee meeting. My understanding is that you feel you have no control over other school board members on social media, however, that only appears to be the case when it's somebody that you agree with. One of the main responsibilities of this committee is to review and respond to complaints or concerns regarding board members and develop procedures for handling such complaints. I'd like to know where my response from the committee is regarding my complaint of Mrs. Holt's boycott of local restaurants. I listened to the meeting, and yet again, this behavior was swept under the rug. You read a letter on her behalf that was not only another slap in the face to these restaurants in the community, but it was completely false. Ms. Holt blatantly asked for a boycott of local businesses in her own words and stating that they do not support public education. That, to me, is defamation, and I truly hope these restaurants make an example out of her in civil court if this board will not. In her letter, she states that it was never her intent to boycott, even though she used those very words. Why, after a few restaurants backed out due to backlash from you and Delegate Fowler, did you then throw up support for these businesses on social media? The perception is bad. It's that they bowed to your demands, and now you're lifting your boycott request because of it. There's a term that comes to mind consistently, and it's something a majority of you could use a lesson in: accountability. Whether it's your personal social media or not, you represent this board. Whether you list the job title on your social media or not, we know you serve this board. While I don't believe in cancel culture, I do believe in accountability. If you are to hold certain board members accountable for posts, then you better do it for all of them. If this governance committee meeting cannot follow one of its main duties, then I believe there is no need for the committee at all. This board, time and time again, has politicized issues at every turn, and it's not fair to your community to, excuse me, to play the continuous mind games. I guarantee if this was Miss Manning or Mrs. Hughes, uh, this would be handled a lot differently. Next, I'd like to address how wonderful my son has been over the last few weeks, no longer wearing a mask. I was appalled at the last meeting the way some of these parents spoke, stating that we need to keep our germ-infested children away from theirs. The outright nastiness that came from some of these parents at the last meeting is sad, but it comes from the majority of the sport as well, so I hope you're proud of the example that you're setting. Amazingly enough, my son has been treated with nothing but respect and kindness from his school, and it's nice to remind, reminded of the innocence of these children and that they don't see the target some adults put on their backs. We saw with the numbers today that they have clearly gone down, and yes, whether it's due to masks being optional or not begs the question if correlation is causation. But could you imagine if the numbers went up? Ms. Melnick and Ms. Owens, you all were very concerned with the opt-out numbers, but let me remind you that it's not a requirement for parents to check that box for you. Another comment, Ms. Melnick, you stated that teachers are being muzzled because they're not allowed to compliment children for wearing masks. That needs to be knocked off. It was in the meeting earlier. Lastly, as proud as you are about the supposed fourteen percent opting out, I hope you're just as proud as how the numbers have gone down. I guess my children really isn't a disease.
Our next speaker is Tara Chang, Thomas Grant, and Lindsay Nathaniel.
Welcome.
In regards to personnel changes coming this July, I do hope there is an open and diverse application process for the position of the school board council, not just an assumption that will automatically go to Kami Lynetti. I understand that The Bluest Eyes and Gender Queer and other pornography books have already been approved by the superintendent and chief academic officer, Kip Rogers, to remain in the public school system. I would hope that this list of books remains safe as well. To Kill a Mockingbird, Gone with the Wind, Les Mis-Lors, Twelve Rules for Life by Jordan Peterson. The Rise and the Fall of the Third Reich, a book that discusses how Hitler gained power through the legal system and legislatively to make what was wrong a pure legal and how people just went along with his evil and justified it by claiming that they had to do what they had to do because it was their job. The Federalist Papers by Alexander Hamilton, James Madison, and John Jay, in which they explain how the Constitution was intended to be interpreted. Common Sense by Thomas Paine. The Constitution, the Declaration of Independence, the Koran, the Torah, and the Bible. We, the friends, hope these books remain safe in the Virginia Beach public school systems to learn and read. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Thomas Grant, Lindsay Nathaniel, and then Heidi Dragneff.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm confused about the school board's authority regarding books that contain material deemed unsuitable to read in this room. Last year, Ms. Rye shut down a lady reading from The Bluest Eye, saying it was too offensive. Yet, the chief academic officer's memo of January twenty-eighth with Dr. Spence's concurrence says this book and five others with such vulgar material should remain in our libraries. This decision was made without public discussion by the board or without public input. Is that right? Have any of you read the parts of these books that by any metric of morality would be labeled as pornography or even child pornography? Here are a few reviews from Amazon. The Bluest Eye. Graphically discusses sexual topics including orgasms, incest, rape, pornography, pedophilia, masturbation, homosexuality, bestiality, and sodomy. Also says, "Images in this book represent a gruesome crime against children. Once these images are imprinted on a child, it is hard to reverse the experience." From Gender Queer, "Images and language in this book have no place anywhere near children, the target audience. It shows oral sex, homosexual sex, et cetera. Don't think this is teaching material. It is intended for grooming." And, one wrote, "A brother encouraging a sister to taste her vagina's slime is supposed to be educational?" Beyond Magenta, "Explicit language, violent acts, graphic descriptions of oral sex by children as young as six, without mentioning its illegal nature." Here's a quote, "From Six Up, I used to kiss other guys, perform oral sex on them. I liked it." The account describes pedophiles masturbating, but does not qualify that these acts were harmful or illegal. From Lawn Boy, "Pornographic and rude. Reads like an exercise in desensitizing children to depraved behavior. Explicit descriptions of homosexual acts among children every few pages. Vulgar, crude, profane language belongs in a corner of a sex shop. Pedophilia is described positively." Despite the vile nature of such comment, your memo states, "The review committee acknowledged the difficult scenes of rape and incest in The Bluest Eye, but believed difficult scenes did not supersede the message and purpose of the book." And the chief academic officer superintendent had concerns about some of the graphic depictions in Gender Queer. However, the concerns did not warrant removal. How much content that would be judged child pornography and abuse in any other medium is enough for books like these? Would you drink a glass of water with one percent cat feces in it because it was mostly good water? I don't suggest banning these books, but just get them out of the school libraries. School board members, it's your job. Dr. Spence works for you. Fix this thing!
Our next speaker is Lindsay Nathaniel, then Heidi Dragneff, then Amy Salers.
Welcome.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Spence. My name is Lindsay Nathaniel. I'd like to start by saying I don't want to wear masks forever. I know we have to learn to live with the virus, but we need to do it safely. I spoke previously at meetings about how Governor Youngkin's executive order violates Senate Bill thirteen oh-three and oversteps his authority. Recently, a judge said the same, but I'm not going to get into that tonight. I simply stand in front of you as a concerned mother. I want you to hear why I send you the emails and why I come to speak. There's a lot of talk about the psychological impact masks have on children, but have you ever had to console a child that lost their parent? Dealt with those tears, that pain? Have you ever thought about what losing someone that you loved to COVID does, especially to a child? Last week, I was comforting a sobbing teenager as he left my house with my daughter to go to the hospital to say goodbye to his father for the very last time. Yesterday, I attended his funeral, and I saw the impact his death had on the entire community as a beloved Virginia Beach police officer. This is real. The decisions you make impact students, families, and the community. This same sweet boy has to go back to school where children aren't wearing masks and acting like COVID isn't real while he grieves losing his father. This is real. I ask you to reverse your decision and require universal masking until it is safe to remove them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heidi Dragneff, then Amy Salers. Uh, Speaker number ten asked to be moved to Zoom, and then it will be Barry Nolan.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm glad that my nine-year-old daughter is no longer in this room. Her father came to pick her up a few minutes ago. The vile things spewed by the previous parent would have exposed her to all those nasty things that she has not known about, read about, heard about until parents decide to start bringing it up at these meetings. You say parents should be able to decide what's best for their children. Doesn't that include books? You don't check what your children are reading before they read it? Teachers aren't teaching these things in the classroom? That is your responsibility. These are not part of school lessons. I want to point out the governor's executive order is illegal and does not override law. SB thirteen oh-three, which says schools are to follow CDC guidelines, which recommends universal masking, was passed into law last year as a compromise to all and to keep politics out of public health decisions. Science changes and evolves as more information is discovered. That's not new. You want to know what's more harmful than masks? COVID. As the nearly one million dead people. If you look around an elementary school, you'd see kids don't care that they're wearing masks. They don't complain. They seem to understand the purpose of wearing masks better than some adults. They actually care about not spreading deadly germs to their friends or loved ones.
Can we please have quiet in the audience? Thank you.
Thank you. When I heard a school board member say that masking children was harmful, I knew that wasn't true. I have that background in medical knowledge. So I looked it up just to make sure and verify, and sure enough, it's a flat-out lie. The only thing it says is children under two shouldn't wear masks because they may not be able to get out of them without help. Wearing masks Wearing masks also helps people, helps keep people from touching their face. And spreading COVID nineteen further. According to your own information this evening, there are nine thousand mask off-outs. But that number is deceiving because kids and teachers are forbidden from talking about masks. So there's no true count of kids going without masks officially. You'll notice that COVID numbers have dropped by fifty percent, which goes to show that our masking was working because numbers lag by about two weeks. And I'd like to remind you that these are our children, not statistics. Our job as parents is to protect them. There's no other mitigation measures being taken. Masks aren't required, vaccines. Testing regularly isn't required, negative tests to return are required. I know because I've asked. Anyone can just lie and say they're negative without proof. Social distancing distancing isn't happening because it's not possible in the schools and there's absolutely no contact tracing. I'd like to point out the situation you've put parents, especially these children in, those that can't wear masks or immunocompromised relying on those around them to keep them safe. Where's their consideration? Do they not matter?
And that is time. Our next speaker is Amy Salers, Barry Nolan, and then it's going to be Michael Sartesiak.
Welcome.
Hi. I'd like to go back to the governance committee. The governance committee and most everyone else who saw Mrs. Holt's public post knew exactly what she meant. We knew her intent to punish any local business owner who dared disagree with her. She did not mince her words. These business owners do not support public education. I'd like to remind you about these business owners. One of those local business owners she called to boycott has volunteered as a wrestling coach for over twenty years. He has donated tens of thousands of dollars to public school sports over the years. He was offered a paid position and refused it. He would rather the money go back into the program. Another uncaring business owner, as Mrs. Holt's defamed. Has donated seventy-six thousand dollars to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Do these people not care? And how do we repay their generosity? They're publicly shamed and their businesses boycotted. Because they dare oppose the view of an elected official. I appreciate Mrs. Riggs for standing up and denouncing Mrs. Holt's actions. I wish more of you would do this. Mrs. Melnick and Rye, shameful. Your silence on condemning Mrs. Holt's shows you approve of your, of the actions of your colleague. Unfortunate, but not surprising. I'd like to talk about restorative justice now, which is on the agenda. Restorative justice was created to try and fix the supposed problem of systemic racism. That is teachers and principals disciplining minority students at a higher rate than others. Restorative justice justice decriminalizes misdemeanors, does not hold the offender accountable. The offender stays in mainstream classrooms. No police are involved. This idea is to address what they say is the root of the problem by tasking teachers and staff. With following certain individualized protocols, which may or may not include healing circles. Peer counseling and reparative dialogue. The ulterior and possibly main motive for this new program was to help schools look better when it came to numbers of crime. And and it did. Less crimes reported, supposedly safer schools. But restorative justice promotes a culture of leniency, making schools less safe because of the under-reporting of crimes. School districts all across the country, Oklahoma, California, New York, they're all saying these programs are not working to keep their schools safe. And these are only a few examples of these programs failing miserably. Some ending up with tragic results like the school shooting that happened in Parkland, Florida. Do your research. I promise you I am. Instead of focusing on pushing parents out of the schools, why not invite them in? Dads on Duty is a program in a school district district in Louisiana created by dads in the school district. They're present during the school day. They patrol the schools, hallways, and activities. It's a program other states are interested in and have even started on their own. We need to work together as a community, invite parents in. There are some good ideas out.
And that is time.
Please keep politics out of the classroom.
Our next speaker is Barry Nolan, then Michael Sartesiak, and then Caitlin Alstine.
Welcome.
Thank you. This past week, The Washington Post had an article about a seventh grade textbook. That was used in Virginia public schools from the nineteen fifties to the nineteen seventies. It was titled Virginia: History, Government, Geography by Francis Butler Simpkins and others. It was the book that I was given when I was a student at Gunston Junior High School in Fairfax, Virginia. A segregated school at the time. It was a textbook that was filled from cover to cover with rather grotesque lies about Virginia's. Disgraceful record on slavery, civil rights, and human rights. And it was what I was taught, and it was a big bucket of malarkey. The textbook, for instance, claimed, and I quote, many Negroes were taught to read and write. And that many of them were allowed to meet in groups for preaching, for funerals, and singing and dancing. But oddly, nowhere did that history textbook mention the indisputable fact. That a nineteenth century Virginia law specified. Every assemblage of Negroes for the purpose of religious worship conducted by a Negro was unlawful. And any instruction to Negroes in reading or writing in the nighttime for any purpose shall be an unlawful assembly. The nice sunny history book failed to mention that nineteenth century Virginia. Any Negro caught learning to read could be punished with, and I quote, stripes. A sterile legal euphemism for a brutal beating with a whip on bare flesh. The textbook claimed Negroes remain loyal to their white mistresses. Even after President Lincoln promised in his Emancipation Proclamation that the slaves would be freed. Oddly, the book never mentioned the Fugitive Slave Act of seventeen ninety-three. The later, more expansive Fugitive Slave Act of eighteen fifty. With a terrible brutal torture that runaway slaves would experience when returned to their owners. It never mentioned the laws forbidding African Americans to vote in white primaries, serve on juries, or testify against a white person. It never mentioned the Racial Integrity Act of nineteen twenty-four. That made it a crime to marry a person of another race and declaring that you were considered non-white if you had, quote. One drop of Negro blood in your ancestry. That was a book that was used to teach my generation of Virginians history. And it was a lie, a pretty mean-spirited lie from cover to cover. And now our new governor would apparently like to bring it back and use that one again. Stripped as it was of anything potentially distressing for white students or their parents. Struck of anything resembling the truth.
Our next speaker is Michael Sartesiak, then Caitlin Alstine, then Melissa Lucson.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So I don't get to speak at these as much as the rest of my family that you might know, but. After the abrupt about-face with masking in the schools, I wanted to come and. Say a few words about it. To address some of the things that were brought up earlier tonight, first of all, with the virtual of Virginia, uh, the reason it's only seventy-five people is because. Given the options that my daughter was in terms of having to drop honors English and not being able to finish ATC, which she's now. A year and a half into on a program, it it's not an option for her to go virtual at this point in time, so. Though we wanted to, it's it's not realistic. Uh, fourteen percent have opted out is a number that we talked about earlier. Um, first of all, if you think that some of the people are vehemently against masking, uh, bothered to fill out the paperwork. Uh, I can guarantee you they probably didn't. They're just deciding not to mask, have their kids mask at school. But if we take into account that fourteen percent is real, that means eighty-six percent of the population still feel that masking is necessary in our schools. It's a pretty big majority last time I checked, and any vote by any organization that eighty-six percent voting for it would still pass. Uh, to say that the tide is turning and numbers are coming down, they're still at, I think, twenty-one percent. Uh, and and the community. Um, I know last year, ten percent was a deep red and we were going to stay home if they got that bad. So to say that they're coming down, they're still very high. To say that the tide is turning, we said that at the end of Delta as well. We don't know what's to come with this. We need to be more diligent. Uh, stay the course. Definitely, we should have stayed the course when we were masking, not changed it based on. Uh, incomplete information coming down from the governor's office. I I like the fact that we're trying to keep teachers safe from a political standpoint and not have them involved in those discussions, but. I wonder why we're not keeping them safe from a health standpoint as well. Uh, we need to do more. These teachers are the ones who, uh, they are our public schools. We need to keep them safe because without our teachers, we don't have school. Um, yeah, masking harmful for children was already addressed. Uh, there's some anecdotal evidence about hygiene issues. Uh, potential. Learning for emotional cues and non-verbal communication, but my my kids text all the time and. Communicate pretty well without, uh, being seen. Bottom line is, there's no good reason to to go against masking at this point in time. Anybody who wants to go against masking is doing it either out of stubbornness because they've decided. What they've read on social media has taken them down a rabbit hole and now they're not going to change their mind. Or it's based on ignorance of the scientific method. The fact that we have everybody telling us that masking is good, that we should continue to do it. Uh, so yeah, please, please return to masking. My daughter has an autoimmune disease, narcolepsy. I have one lung from cancer when I was five.
And that is time.
It's it's not a good situation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Caitlin Alstine, Melissa Lucson, and then Lindsay Riley.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Caitlin Alstine. I'm a middle school teacher here in Virginia Beach. And I would like to thank you all first and foremost for giving me the opportunity this evening to address you all. About my concerns regarding the proposed middle school schedule change for the upcoming school year. There's a teacher retention crisis everywhere. We know that. It's not news to any of us and it's happening everywhere. And when we as teachers are asked, what can we do to support you? What can we do to keep you? We say, amongst other things. Give us more planning. And take stuff off of our plates. We have way too many tasks on our workload. The proposed schedule. Almost reduces our planning time in half. Yet adds a fifth course on a different grade level. Meaning a different curriculum, meaning it's something that we've not taught before. But we have less, we have almost half the time to learn this curriculum. And to prepare the high-quality instruction that meets the needs of all of our students. I currently teach two preps in middle school. I teach sixth grade core science and I teach sixth grade US History I. I need every second of my planning time to make sure that I can accommodate every single learner in my core science. Including my ten students with individualized educational plans. And every student in all of my history courses, including my class of twenty-eight, that's a gifted cluster. With five students on IEPs who are not twice exceptional, two of whom cannot read and write on their own. So. When we say that we're maximizing our human resources by having teachers teach an additional course, I'm already being stretched thin. How am I supposed to become this jack-of-all-trades who can support her students properly? When in reality, I'd become a master of none. I don't know about you, but I truly believe that anyone in any profession should be a true master of their craft. How can I master my craft as obviously a young teacher if you don't give me the time to do so? When I was growing up here in Virginia Beach, we were touting ourselves as ahead of the curve. Now we say that we are charting the course. We're charting the course and helping our students chart their courses for their futures. One that is prosperous and successful. But in order to help our students chart their courses, we still have to think ahead of the curve. The proposed schedule is not ahead of the curve. It's way back behind the curve and honestly, I can wave at the curve from way back behind it. So I would like to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I hope you take what I've said into consideration. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Lucson, Lindsay Riley, and then Matthias Tellkamp.
Welcome.
Hello, good evening. Uh, I'm so tired of talking about masks. I think we all are tired of talking about masks. Um, but the old saying, give someone an inch and they'll take a mile. I know we've all heard of it. Um, as soon as masks were made optional, that wasn't enough. There were parents that said they wouldn't fill out the form. Like you, we sat around, we listened to that. You guys decided to change your vote. You said, hey, we're going to do this. We're going to make it optional for parents to opt out. And then some of those parents didn't even want to fill out a form. There are more than nine thousand children in the school system out of sixty, what, sixty-three thousand? That you have. There are more than nine thousand children wearing masks because they know, just like somebody else said. They're not being held accountable to wear them. Um, when teachers, when they know, I mean, it's like monkey see, monkey do kind of a thing. Um, they don't want to comply wearing it on a bus. And I'm like, I don't understand. Um, the problem with the opt-out form, they don't want to sign it. The defiance comes from the parents. Children mirror their parents' behavior. Some of them are screaming about parental rights and parental choice. Within days of making masks optional, there was a group of anti-masking parents. Rowing troops to show up at the vaccination clinics that the city was holding at the schools. They were trying to get people to show up and hand out vaccine misinformation. And to, in their words, because I do have it, to. Warn them about the biological weapon that they will be putting in their children's body now. Um, so does parental choice only apply to them? Because as far as I see it, if I'm walking into a vaccination clinic with my child. That's my choice as a parent. And you have no business showing up in a parking lot, handing out misinformation. And then actually telling other parents that they're putting a biological weapon in their children's bodies. And then screaming that my parental choice, my parental rights, I want to make these health decisions for my children. Well, so do I. I want to make those health decisions for my children. And if that means vaccination, that's what I mean is best. So I just find the hypocrisy just mind-numbing at this point. I, it's mind-numbing. Um.
Thirty seconds.
Opposed to mask mandates, they're opposed to vaccinations as a mitigating factor. Restraining teachers from asking children to put their masks on when they can see that the parents didn't opt out. That's a terrible decision on the administration's part. I mean, I know you guys went with the mask optional, but as far as the administration, and I've, I I spoke at the school board. Or at the city council meeting to get that fifty-four million in reversion funds. I was in favor of it. But I do want the administration to make sure that they communicate with teachers, that they should be able to do that.
And that is time.
Students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Riley, Matthias Tellkamp, and then Virginia Wassenberg.
Welcome.
Hello. Um, just wanted to thank you guys again for allowing my children to attend school unmasked. The last two weeks have been amazing for my students. Um. Also, I'm here to talk about the discrimination against unvaccinated athletes. I know I've spoke about this several times. And actually, my daughter was able to message all of you over the weekend and got a response from Ms. Rye, and I wasn't going to come speak, but Ms. Rye's response. Um, basically said that the reason why you were, why the testing for the unvaccinated athletes, the protocol was designed to be an additional layer. Of safety mitigation strategy for winter sports. Um, when COVID risk was elevated by the indoor competition setting. That's from your email today. And I just want to say that. If that's the reason, then we need to stop now or we need to test everybody. Um, my daughter has twenty minutes to eat lunch. Okay, she is a. Um, a very active student. She takes weightlifting, so she's already, you know, working out at school during the day without a mask. They've never worn masks in weightlifting, by the way. Um. But so she's doing that and then she has twenty minutes to eat and then go after school to workouts. So you're taking away the only twenty minutes that she has for any type of nutrition and she's having to go get this testing done. Meanwhile, other students that are vaccinated don't have to do that. And as we all know. You know, maybe the information before about vaccinations were like, you know, people that were vaccinated were not going to get COVID, but we all know people that are vaccinated and boosted are still getting COVID and spreading it. So the risk still applies to all students. So I really feel like you're discriminating against a certain group of students and it's and it's putting them at an unfair advantage. And I've heard that it's being ended at the end of the month, but I really don't see why you guys can't end it sooner. And that's really why I'm here. Um, again, you know, it's just a huge inconvenience. These kids are feeling singled out. It really shouldn't, it it should just be everybody if we're really worried about it. If we're really worried about people spreading COVID, it should be everybody and not just a certain group of students. Um, and then also if it's going to continue, change the time. Don't take away their twenty minutes of lunch. Have you ever stood in a line at Kellam High School to try to get a lunch? It takes more than twenty minutes. They're not even able to eat. It's 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 ridiculous. I mean, that that's not healthy. If we're worried about their health, my kid can't work out and weight training for an hour and a half, eat nothing and then go to workouts. At four o'clock, you know, be there till four o'clock and not eat anything all day. That's not healthy. I don't see any of you guys doing that. Um, and then one last thing I just wanted to say is, you know, I see a lot of dads here with a lot of opinions, and if you look at this board.
Thirty seconds.
No men on it. There's and there's no men. If if if, you know, I I really feel that if some of these dads with strong opinions, they need to run for the school board. And we need to have a little bit more diversity on this board, so. I encourage you all to step up, men, step up and run for school board. And thank you and have a good night.
Our next speaker is Matthias Tellkamp, then Virginia Wassenberg.
Welcome.
Welcome. Your choices, your choice to hold classes this year was dangerous.
Your choices, your choice to hold classes this year was dangerous and reckless decision without requiring that everyone within the schools show proof of vaccination for entry. For reference, enrollment requires DPT, polio, measles, mumps, rubella, hepatitis B, chickenpox, tetanus. You should have required anyone entering this doors to schools to provide the same proof or offer to provide a vaccine at the time of entry. Why didn't you make it a requirement? Would you forego all the other vaccines? Thanks to you, me and my three kids all had COVID. I worked from home so the exposure could have only happened at one of the three different high schools that they attend. We are living in a time that allows dishonesty and duplicity to be common in our lives. New, news organizations are deceitful and are not providing the whole truth or they are producing out and out lies. Selfish actions are pushing people to think of themselves and not of others. It is your responsibility to not let the selfish request be put above the rights of others and your obligation to protect those that are not able to protect themselves. Little breaches of integrity provide avenues for lies to become okay. And with each of those breaches, we are pushed to believe the lies more and more. It is your responsibility to make sure that you are being honest and not ambiguous with the information delivered to the public. We all need to remember that the public is who elected you and who is also the ones that decide what we want. We opened this meeting with the pledge. The last part contains one nation indivisible and justice for all. And there are some that do not believe that those words, as they are not, uh, as they are only choosing for themselves. For too long, we've allowed people at all levels of our government to be dishonest, ambiguous, and reckless with their statements. Education is not just for those that are privileged and wealthy. It is a mandate of the state and federal government, is a right of every person in our community, and it should not be accepted any longer that those that act privileged and ignore the rules are allowed to be within the schools.
Thirty seconds.
When someone chooses to be part of a community, they should care about the others that are part of the community. Those that are challenging mask mandates are choosing to do so under the guise of personal choice. How is my choice respected by forcing unvaccinated kids to be side by side with those that are? How are you being honest when you allow the lies and lack of clarity to perpetuate the dishonesty? If they don't want to mask, send them to Virtual Virginia, not those that choose to wear them.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Virginia Wassenberg.
Welcome.
Good evening. Um, before I get started on what I've written, I think it's important that this board respect our governor, no matter what party that governor belongs to. And I think it is egregious that, Madam Chair, you wouldn't call that out when that happens uh, in these meetings. So I'd appreciate it if this board would respect our governor. Um, so last week, the governance committee met. During that meeting, the um, attorney Kamala Lanetti presented an update to the committee about the new in-house attorney for the school board. And uh, she said that she was the one who was writing the job description for that, that position. And she said, and I quote, "I'll give that to HR to look at, so that piece will come in when it comes back to the school board to approve." Concerning her writing the job description. And then concerning the job description, Mr. Spence, Dr. Spence said, "I think it should flow through the governance committee because Mrs. Lanetti is liaison to this committee." And then later on, Ms. Melnick, you went on to say to Ms. Lanetti, quote, "This has just solidified you never being able to retire. So um, welcome to forever." And then later on, you said, quote, "We're lucky to have you." Now, the Virginia Beach School Board Policy Section 4-4 is the equal employment opportunity, nondiscrimination, and anti-harassment in compliance officers policy. Ms. Lanetti is the present attorney representing the school board, and yet she is the one creating the job description, the office, and the salary for the new in-house attorney position. And if members of this board have already decided to hire Ms. Lanetti without advertising the contracted position to the public and interviewing other applicants, then how can this be called an equal employment opportunity? And so I encourage this board to immediately amend this process by not allowing this job description to flow through the governance committee for approval if Ms. Lanetti is indeed applying for the position of the in-house attorney. And because she serves as liaison to the committee, that's not equitable and it's not equal. And I encourage this board to start over with the job description for this position immediately and end the process of letting Ms. Lanetti take over that. Especially if the Virginia Beach City Public Schools wants to maintain their equal employment opportunity status. You can all do better than that. And I encourage you to do so.
Madam Chair, we are going to move on to our online speakers. Our first speaker is Sarah Gerloff. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Our children are our most precious gifts and are very impressionable. This is why I believe those chosen to serve on our school boards and work in our school system should be held to the highest standards of leading by positive example and following our constitution to a T. The last time I spoke to this board, I was presenting some important information to parents, teachers, and taxpayers, pairs concerning the ethics of some on this board and the superintendent. Carolyn Rye cut off my mic in the middle of my speech. Carolyn Rye has taken an oath to uphold our constitution, but she broke that oath by abridging my First Amendment right to free speech. That is actual real law. Law enforcement standing in the room, that was a violation of real law. Are you listening to me, law enforcement? I have had many law enforcement officers tell me they are not to interpret the constitution. I am perplexed by that. How is one able to properly enforce the law if he or she does not know the highest law of the land? The police do know code though. Carolyn Rye also broke the law by violating US Code 242, known as deprivation of rights under color of law, which states whoever under color of law of any law, statute, ordinance, regulation, or custom willfully sub, subjects any person in any state to the deprivation of any right secured by the constitution, in this case, it would be my First Amendment right, shall be fined under this title or imprisoned or both. All those listening on January 25th, when my freedom of speech was abridged, are witnesses to a real crime. Law enforcement in the room that night with, witnessed a real crime. Under Virginia Code of Law 19.2-100, I am authorized to make a citizen's arrest. Law enforcement in the room, I am calling upon you to arrest Carolyn Rye for abridging my First Amendment right to free speech, which is secured by our constitution and protected under Code 242. These are real laws. You can look them up for yourself and please do. Law enforcement, will you enforce the law, please? Or do you only enforce the law some of the time on some of the people and only some of the laws? Which is it, law enforcement? Which one do you do? It seems there's a lot of inequity going on in our country today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kim Benzie. Please unmute.
Welcome. Welcome. Hello. This evening, I will start with a letter from a previous VBCPS teacher. It is general knowledge that seatbelts save lives, right? Did you know that when David Hollister introduced his seatbelt bill in Michigan in early 1980s, he got hate mail comparing him to Hitler? People complained that seatbelts were uncomfortable and restrictive. They claimed seatbelts were infringing on their freedoms. Challenging seatbelt laws went all the way to the Supreme Court. We all know how that ended up. Seatbelts save lives. Now take that bit of history and apply the lesson of the seatbelt era to now. Masks keep us safe in a viral epidemic, pandemic, excuse me. By choosing to appraise a loud minority, you have put all of the rest of our students and their families at greater risk. This is not how you put students first. This is not how you value differences. This is not how we do great work together. When a pandemic comes and changes life as we know it, we need to do what we can to make our community safe. I have yet to hear of a person who has lost their life to a mask in school. Why go changing rules in the middle of a year after families have made decisions about schooling based on criteria you gave them at the beginning of the school year? These are not small decisions. These are huge decisions to many families and all this flip-flopping in the middle of the year is ridiculous and unsafe. So when you say put students first, whose students? Virginia Beach? You're behind the curve. And for me to piggyback off of that, I'm a VBCPS mother um, who daily not only puts her seatbelt on, but makes sure that my children have their seatbelts on before I even move my car. But also ensure that they have all of their supplies to include their masks. We value safety of all individuals to include everyone in the building as we do not believe teachers, students, administrators, or others within the building should have to put their lives at risk and have poor working conditions due to pandering to those who you are afraid of. Due to these conditions and poorly designed schedule changes that are in the mix of VBCPS will be a skeleton crew more so than it currently is due to your lack, lack of support for them is driving them out. So while the state of Virginia is fourth in public education and Virginia Beach is seventh behind Inova, uh, maybe we should be learning something from them. At least they value the safety of children and employees. So I ask, what type of education are you going to be affording our children next year when our valued teachers are gone? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cara Eggers. Please unmute.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to be reading two statements from other parents on their behalf, people who could not attend tonight and both remain anonymous. Um, the first one says, "Good evening. I am the parent of an elementary student in Virginia Beach and I would like to speak in support of returning to universal masking. I'm very concerned about the amount of teachers choosing to leave the profession due to concerns for their health and the health of their families. I believe that returning to requiring students to being masked will help retention of teachers. I feel that we also need to protect students who cannot be vaccinated and wearing masks is an easy way to do that. Yesterday, I witnessed the principal of my child's school get loudly verbally abused by a parent who refused to wear a mask to enter the building to collect her child. Teachers and school staff do not deserve to be sworn at and abused for calming and firmly, firmly stating the rules regarding, regarding masks for adults. Requiring masks for all, including students, makes the rules very clear and also keeps everyone safe. Thank you for your time." Second student or parent, um, I strongly disagree with the choice to allow parents to opt students out of wearing masks and believe the decision should be reversed. However, if this does not happen, the school board needs to at least show the parents who have not opted out their students some respect by enforcing proper mask wearing for their students. The majority of parents have not opted out their students from wearing face masks. And you need to remember, these parents are not only trying to protect their students, but they are also trying to keep everyone else healthy as well. According to the CDC, consistent wearing of face masks indoors in public settings lowers the odds of positive COVID test results. The most protective types of face masks in 90, KN95s and N95s lower the odds of contracting COVID-19 by 83% followed by a surgical mask. The least protective um, type of mask is a cloth mask. However, it still lowers the wearer's odds of contracting COVID by 56%. Um, wearing a mask shows humility as it is clear anyone infected with COVID-19 can spread the disease even before they have symptoms um, and can transmit the virus, both when they are symptomatic and asymptomatic. Um, wearing a mask also shows a strong, a strong sense of community as well as we all want businesses to stay open and help keep employees healthy. Wearing a mask in public helps us lower community spread. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Shepherd. Please unmute.
Welcome. Good evening, school board members. I'm testifying tonight to urge you to support universal masking with clearly defined metrics for on and off ramps. We are still in a high transmission rate here. My son is experiencing increased anxiety over the lack of universal masking in the schools. While I appreciated the offer for virtual instruction, Virtual Virginia is not an option for him as he is enrolled in the second year program of, at the ATC. I'm now going to read comments from a parent who wish to remain anonymous. "We have a first grader with a unique challenge. He is extremely small for his age with a growth deficiency and has a speech disorder. He is high risk. He was making wonderful progress in the school until COVID. Since then, we kept him home due to him and myself being immune compromised. Once he was vaccinated, we sent him back in person because it is where he needed to be. We felt safe with our decision to send our school special needs child back to school. But after weeks of sending him back, he brought home COVID to me. We need masks to stay in our education system or it will fail. It is unfair to teachers, staff, and other students that they can't depend on a basic bare minimum of a mask to protect, protect one another. Children in other countries have worn masks for years before COVID and that was all, they were ju, doing all just fine. Doctors and nurses wear them all day and they are just fine. The political discourse, political discourse over a simple tool to prevent spreading illness is ridiculous. Americans are supposed to care for one another and I don't appreciate the politicization of my son's education for political gain and loss of human life. This will never end unless we take simple proven measures. America has become me, rica, and we need to take the me out of it and focus on one another or our children will never recover from an already rocky education system. I never thought I would see parents fight for their children to get sick for a political upper hand and in doing so, these parents and the governor are harming the population and our children. The bare minimum is a mask. I implore the board to make the decision to protect our immune compromised students and follow the other school divisions around the Commonwealth to protect our students and staff by having a mask mandate until metrics show that removing masks in schools is the best practice. You, our elected school board members, have the authority and responsibility to protect us. Thank you."
Our next speaker is Melinda Rogers. Please unmute.
Welcome. Good evening, and thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you tonight regarding the COVID mitigation strategies and the proposed changes to the middle school schedule. First, let me reiterate, I am in support of reinstating the mask mandate, especially since the executive order has been suspended in seven other school districts. Unfortunately, we were not those a, among the lawsuit that occurred. I wear my mask and teach my children to wear their mask, not for themselves and not for me, but to protect the community and especially those who cannot protect themselves. Second, as a parent, I have successfully navigated one of my children through the middle school years. I am currently helping one of my children navigate this interesting time and I have another child who will begin his middle school journey in a year and a half. Therefore, I'm highly concerned about the proposed changes to the middle school schedule. As a teacher myself, I am fully aware of the staffing shortages the, the division is facing. I've spoken about shortages being nationwide problem in the past. One of the problems facing Virginia Beach teachers is lack of planning time. In fact, after we began the 2021, 2022 school year, teachers were so in need of planning time that the division changed our schedule to accommodate the teacher need. Therefore, I simply cannot understand why there would be a proposed schedule change that would eliminate much needed planning time and fill that time with even more work. Teachers are already stretched to their limit. Most teachers completing hours of unpaid work weekly just to fulfill the requirements of their current teaching job. If this were just a numbers game, then the division would be able to fill the vacant jobs with the teachers they currently employ. However, this is not just about numbers. It's about teacher careers and lives. We cannot stretch teaching staff any further. When teachers are not given a choice within a school division, they take the choice to leave. At the beginning of this month, the NPR reported that half the teachers they pulled are already looking for an exit out of education. Instead of forcing teachers to move out of jobs that they love, why not do something else to entice teachers to want to come to our division? Why are we not offering signing bonuses? Why are we not looking at our pay scale versus the pay scale of similar divisions around the country and making sure we're paying our employees? Why are we not looking at our pay scale versus the pay scale of similar divisions around the country and making sure we're paying our employees a competitive wage? Why have we not looked at our health benefits or retirement packages and start offering education staff something that they they will want to have? Something that will want them to come work for us. Unfortunately, the staffing shortages will not get better overnight. My children will be will be school aged for another eight years. I don't want any of my children or anyone else in the division to lose out on the knowledge and expertise of some of the finest educators in the world that we have right here by watching our teachers leave or retire early because they just can't take it anymore. We must do something about it. We must treat our professionals like professionals and make them an offer to stay, not force them to solve problems that are not theirs to solve. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanya Rivers. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Tanya Rivers, please unmute.
It's not working.
We can hear you slightly. Can you hear us? If you can hear us. And you can get on later. Oh, here we go. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Rivers.
Sorry about that. I'm speaking to the two VB CPS students. I serve on a PTA.
Uh, you're coming across garbled. Just give us a moment. Try again, please.
I'm speaking tonight as a parent of two.
I'm sorry, still garbled. This is unusual. What do we do now in the face of here? Can we try to get back? Go, Ms. Whit Rivers? Let's try to get through this. Okay, that sounds a little better.
Speaking tonight as a parent of two VB CPS students. I serve on a PTA board. I run the gardening culinary program in Virginia Beach Elementary School and I'm on a VB CPS community advisory committee. I say these things to demonstrate to you that I'm an active member in the school community. The students I see first and the troubles the teachers and staff are facing.
I'm sorry, I think, can we try to come back to this? Speaker, Mr. Din, try to figure out what's going on. Ms. Rivers, we're gonna go ahead for now because this isn't working, but we'll try to come back to you.
Our next speaker is Tammy Waters. Please unmute.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tammy Waters and I have been a teacher in VB CPS for twenty-three years. Tonight, I'm asking you to reinstate universal masking for all students. Your decision to make masks optional puts students and teachers at risk on a daily basis. Masks help keep sick people from spreading their germs and infecting others. They also help keep respiratory droplets from someone who's sick from landing in the mouth and nose of healthy people. Wearing masks alone may not guarantee you won't get the virus, but they do provide some protection while not wearing one offers none. Classrooms and hallways are tight spaces. In many schools, classes are full and there is little to no room for social distancing. Students are in enclosed spaces for hours at a time. Add to that a lack of proper ventilation and you create an environment that encourages the spread of germs every time an unmasked student talks, sneezes, coughs, laughs, or sings. The decision to mask or not cannot be a personal one. It must be a community decision. And we must do what is best for the community as a whole. Although many of us are young and healthy enough to beat COVID, should we contract it? There are others in our community who will not. I wear my mask to protect my students, their parents, and their grandparents. I wear my mask to protect my mother who's in the high-risk group. I wear my mask to protect my best friend who has diabetes. I wear my mask to protect my colleague who's expecting a baby. I wear my mask to show that I care about other people's health because that's what you do when you live in a community. Please do the right thing and reinstate universal masking for all students. Thank you.
Man of chair, um, speaker number eight and number nine are not online. We will move to speaker number ten, which is Lawrence Reed. Please unmute.
Welcome.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can, sir. Please proceed.
All right, um. After speaking to numerous people last week, uh, including yourself, Ms. Right, um, I'm compelled to say that neither legal counsel nor administration should be able to request a special meeting by the school board in order to avoid to have an agenda push and avoid the scrutiny of the people as I was told was done uh for the January twentieth special meeting. That defeats the need for a school board. If you're gonna run it like that, then it's it's not gonna benefit anyone. As I said two weeks ago, the Declaration of Independence states that life comes before equality. And equality comes before the pursuit of happiness, the right to do what you want to do. It's secondary even to equality, which is liberty. And life comes before all three of of the other two. So you guys have allowed counsel, which is the lawyer, the same one the other people were talking about, Ms. Lanetti, and admin to usurp the people's need for life for other people's privileged wants. Parents are in charge of their children's health as the governor states and as he stated in law. However, when you enter a public institution, you have to have additional rules and laws that keep people safe. These are facts. But you guys have allowed, and not only that, they they say when they're in the Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident. Right? You guys have allowed politicians and again lawyers to put my child and others' lives at risk. I have a cousin who is close to death in the hospital right now. He's still in there. He'd been in there since the last time we talked. Okay, and I'm telling you, I don't want anything to happen to my kids.
Thirty seconds.
The governor's executive order is illegal. He violated his oath to uphold our laws by issuing an illegal order. And emergency executive orders are only additive, not able to remove stuff. And the only people that can change that that could change it if it was legal would be the General Assembly. Executive orders cannot be contrary to existing law.
Our next speaker is Michelle Clure. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a seventh grade special education teacher and I'm drowning. This is my tenth year in education and this has been the most difficult by far. Today, I wanted to give you a small glimpse into what I do. It's not a comprehensive list, but enough that you'll get a good idea of how the proposed middle school schedule could affect me and my students. I started the year with seventeen kids on my caseload. For those seventeen, I have to write new IEPs for each of them over a ten-month period. I have to write amendments for them if we determine during the year that something may not be working. I have to collect data on each one of their goals. They average about three goals apiece, some more, some less. So at three goals apiece, that's fifty-one goals. Every four and a half weeks, I have to report on those goals and send that information to parents. Every four and a half weeks, I have to have a meeting for each child who has a failing grade in one or more classes. Every four and a half weeks, I have to make sure I've graded and submitted grades for the class that I teach. And I'm one of the lucky ones that only has to do that for one class. I've met with students concerning academic, social, and emotional issues. I voluntarily have a group that comes to me three times a week to work on missing assignments. I've stayed late to assist students. I have to collect data if a child shows behavioral concerns. I have to contact parents regarding a myriad of things, including but not limited to bullying, sleeping in class, disrespect, a child appearing to be sad or upset. I have multiple conversations with teachers to ensure an understanding of accommodations. It has become increasingly difficult to schedule meetings since our compliance support teachers have been taken away as a resource. So with only one bell a day and many of those bells taken up by meetings, it'll be next to impossible. I used to dream of becoming a teacher. It's my calling. When the new schedule came out, I began dreaming of how I was gonna get out because I know my plate can't hold anymore. We've been asked what can be taken off our plates to help, but in my experience, for every little thing taken off like talent ed, we get another much bigger thing added, such as half of our planning time being taken away. Change will cause you to have a much larger teacher shortage than you're prepared for or than what this schedule change can make up for. Teachers will no longer consider Virginia Beach to be a top district to teach for when they see that they don't get the time needed to be effective. I cannot effectively serve with my special needs students the way they deserve and ultimately they're the ones who will end up hurting the most. I'm a school mom to so many of these kids and with this new schedule, they will have to feel unfortunately how my own children feel sometimes. Too busy with all the extra tasks to have time for them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Catherine Mally. Please unmute.
Welcome. Can you hear me? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Ri, members of the school board, and Superintendent Spence. My name is Kathy Mally and I am a twenty-year teacher in the Virginia Beach school system and a member of the VBEA board. I am speaking on behalf of my middle school colleagues. The proposal to cut middle school teachers' planning time in half and assign them an extra class to prepare and teach will not solve the teacher shortage. It will exacerbate it. In a time when we already have a teacher shortage and teachers are exploring other options outside of the classroom, how will this recently discussed option mediate the shortage? It won't. Middle school teachers feel betrayed and disappointed concerning this proposed change. Some do not feel emotionally ready to address the board. I am speaking for them. This is from a middle school teacher. Our planning time regularly gets reduced due to attending meetings, professional development, covering classes, and other reasons. This proposal would cut our potential planning time in half while adding an additional prep for which we will be unavailable to attend PLC meetings. Many choose to teach at the middle school level in order to be able to focus on one grade level in a year. While some already split their focus voluntarily, this would require all teachers to split that focus. Our children deserve the best quality education they can possibly receive. Adding an additional prep would largely limit the amount of time we could be available to provide feedback and support for our students as we would be learning a new curriculum and implementing it. All of our students would suffer. Teachers' stressful working conditions are children's learning conditions. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elaine Lombardi. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, school board members, Dr. Spence and others. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you have expressed my concerns and I promise I'm not gonna call for anyone's arrest. I am employed by VB CPS. I live in Virginia Beach. My four children are VB CPS graduates and now my grandchildren attend Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I am so very proud of all of that. And I hope you are too because we're in this together. I've spent my entire life in public service, my entire adult life in public service with twenty years in the military, several years as a civil servant and government contractor, and now as a teacher in our amazing school system. I love your children, your grandchildren, your neighbors' children, and all the children in our community. A collaborative education professional learning community called K-12 Leaders surveyed educational professionals last week. They found that two out of every three respondents described themselves as dissatisfied with their current working conditions. Of that sixty-seven percent who are dissatisfied, eighty-eight percent said they are ready to leave their jobs with less than one month's notice. Compound that with the documented drastic increase in enrollment in teacher education programs. You know, USDAE says there's a twenty percent decrease. Throw in the amount of vacancies we've had this school year and don't forget what could very well be an upcoming mass exodus of middle school teachers. I would hope that the school board would be looking for ways to keep us around rather than push us away. Why are you doing this? I take very seriously my commitment to maintaining a welcoming, nurturing, and safe classroom and I work very hard to meet that responsibility. I would like to be confident that my employer, the school board, will reciprocate that commitment to me to provide me a welcoming and safe work environment by reinstating the mask requirement. Attorney Lanetti stated this evening that according to both cases as it stands now, the school board has the right to decide this. This is your decision that you cannot defer or state as anyone else's. Yet even tonight, one of your members claimed that the Virginia Department of Health has stated that masks are harmful to children. Come on now, this sounded so shady to me. I checked the website immediately tonight during this meeting. There's nothing on the VDH page saying masks are harmful. In fact, the VDH still recommends masks for everyone over the age of two. School board members, you have a platform. Don't make things up just because you have people. Don't make things up just because you have people who will happily believe you without question. In conclusion, I am asking you all to reinstate the policy requiring masking in the classrooms. At the very least, I would like to have the authority to enforce masking within my own classroom to protect me and to protect my family and those that I love. Once again, thank you all for the work you do for your community. It may not seem like it's appreciated, but it is. Good night.
Our next speaker is Assen Verbanic. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. I am a VB CPS parent and concerned citizen and I am for universal masking in our schools and putting the health and safety of students above the noise. Ms. Franklin, you wanna talk about disruptions? The school board decision has disrupted my daughter's education since January twenty-fifth and knowing she is in safe inside her third grade classroom where thirty-three percent are maskless. Also, too many students, students, not parents, are making the decision to unmask themselves without parent knowledge. I have a friend whose son has been unmasking on the bus without a an exemption. She was unaware of it. They just thought he had one and that was okay. Uh, he's also been unmasking in the school um against her wishes, but because we don't check, this is what is happening. Um, so your plan that you put into place is not doing well. So if you're gonna continue to have masks optional, you need to make it a parent's choice and not a student's choice. Ms. Manning, let's be honest about the VDH new recommendations. It changed drastically the second Youngkin forced them to bend to his opinion, not science. If the Canadian women hockey team can play science, can play and win an Olympic game against the ROC with masks on, they are not a danger to children. This is just a ridiculous statement. Attorney Lanetti stated that according to both cases as it stands now, the school board has the right to decide this. This is your decision. Many of you were saying your hands were tied and you are rule followers. Well, guess what? The injunction has put this back on you. How are you gonna put student's health and safety first? How are you gonna ignore the anger shouting, name-calling, and threats of lawsuits? It is time to do the right thing again and make up for the mistake you made last month that made it a free-for-all inside our schools and has been playing Russian roulette with our children's and staff's lives. Please bring back universal masking for VB CPS so we can put our students' safety first once again.
Speaker number fifteen had to cancel. We will move on. Morgan Morrison, please unmute.
Welcome.
My name is Morgan Morrison and I am the parent of a Virginia Beach fourth grader. I'm speaking tonight to voice my support for reinstating universal masking. I support the simple common sense mitigation layer primarily because our city has students and staff who can't be vaccinated or at high risk of complications. We are a community and I believe that we need to role model for our students that we're willing to do what we can to protect each other. People shouldn't have to risk their long-term health to go to school. I personally know of at least three elementary-age children at high risk. Students with asthma issues, heart conditions, and those going through cancer treatment. And they are essentially being forced out of our schools in order to protect their health. I'm also concerned about the chilling effect on teachers and staff as these mitigation measures were so quickly stripped away at the height of the Omicron spread. These compounding effects of these relentless hits on them are just too much. Distancing is not possible. Quarantine is being reduced. Planning periods are being hijacked by the need to cover for sudden vacancies. My own daughter caught COVID in mid-June. My own daughter caught COVID in mid-January and I know for a fact that the strict masking rules after the five days of COVID at home are not being enforced. It's one thing after another for these teachers and staff and as a parent, I have significant concerns about the quality of the teaching staff that will remain in another five years as they decide to find other careers where employers truly value their health and wellness. I would not blame them one bit. No one deserves to be treated so disposably. We are driving these folks out by creating unsafe working conditions. I'm a product of this school system, class of nineteen ninety-nine, but I'm becoming increasingly concerned about the future quality of a Virginia Beach public education when our staff and teachers are treated so carelessly. I implore you to reconsider this action as it is clear that the law is not being enforced at this time. Attorney Lanetti stated that according to both cases, the school board has the right to decide this. I personally don't think you should have to bear this burden, but as it stands, this is your decision. Please be the rule followers that many of you have claimed to be and enforce this law. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Molly Grasso. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Molly Grasso, please unmute.
Let's, let's proceed.
Okay, our next speaker is Natalie Bray. Please unmute.
Hello, my name is Natalie Bray. I'm the parent of three Kingston Elementary School students, fifth grade, third grade and kindergarten. I support reinstating universal masking. Our family has done everything in our power to keep ourselves and others safe from COVID nineteen. Last year, we homeschooled, all last year, until our children could be vaccinated this fall. As parents, we are vaccinated and boosted. Our whole family masks in public at all times. We have reduced gatherings with friends and family. We follow the science. We make the sacrifices. This year, we rejoined the public school system because we felt assured that our children, teachers and administration were being taken care of. But that doesn't seem to be the case right now with unmasked students in our schools. Masking for everyone is proven to protect from COVID transmission. When we talk about rights, as a parent, I have a right to know that the safety of my children is of high importance at school. That is my right. Teachers and administrators, they have the right to feel safe at work. No one should have to risk their lives to go to school. In light of the recent court cases, it's the school board that has the right to decide about masking. I urge you to prioritize safety for all and not be strong-armed by a few politicians and a loud minority. Thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Our next speaker is Joyce Francesi. Please unmute.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Francesi and I have been a teacher with VB CPS for the past ten years and I'm currently serving as Vice President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm speaking tonight in response to the middle school scheduling and staffing proposal for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year that was presented to this board. Displacing your loyal, hardworking, overburdened teachers is not a solution to your staffing shortage issues. Your solution should be to make VB CPS a well-functioning school division where teachers will want to work. We have heard from many VBEA members who will likely be affected by this proposed change and I am urging you to vote against this. There are many concerns. This proposal gets rid of core teaming altogether and this is something we know is helpful in supporting our students in the middle grades. As they transition from elementary to secondary school, this core team model guides them towards more independence and responsibility. This proposal does away with SEL support time, which we know from school surveys has helped our students feel more supported and like they belonged in their school community. This proposal adds another prep for our teachers, yet it cuts their planning time in half. There was no information shared on how teachers would be supported with this. And it is also unclear how sped will function. Right now, it is looking like they will have less time for their already impossible workload. Our students and our teachers deserve more. Overall, we have only seen what you will add and no information about what you plan to remove from teachers' plates to make this work. I can tell you this, our plates are already full. I urge you to vote against this. Your current teachers are already trying to survive moment to moment and day to day. This proposal would only make that worse. What do you say to those who are now thinking that it isn't worth it to stay on and try to survive another school year with more hurdles placed in their way? This situation is a perfect example of how collective bargaining could help us. Right now, the only recourse that staff feels like they have is to leave VB CPS and this will only make your staffing issues worse. Give your staff a seat at the table. With collective bargaining, we could all be a part of the problem solving together. Studies have shown that school divisions with collective bargaining have lower teacher turnover, experience fewer teacher transfers and have better distribution of first-year teachers. Isn't this what you need? Teacher recruitment benefits from collective bargaining as well. And according to the NEA, young adults considering a career in education will have to weigh the intrinsic rewards of teaching against low and stagnant salaries, increasing college debt, overtesting and the constant drumbeat of teacher bashing. Collective bargaining will help transform the benefits of teaching for VB CPS and will help you to recruit new quality educators and it will also help you to retain the amazing teachers that you already have. I hope you are listening. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if I may, just to point out to my colleagues, we're approaching eight o'clock. We have five speakers left, which at most is fifteen minutes. So I just wanted-
Madam Chair, we have about eight. If we were to go back and try the two that we couldn't get on before. And also note that Sarah Clark, who was supposed to be in person, she has to go by Zoom.
Alright, so eight, I mean, so we're looking at closer to uh twenty-five minutes. I mean, the point of our bylaw is that we allow the information staff to present and then we return immediately back to speakers. So if there's as many as eight, I, I'm proposing that we do uh switch to information, but I'm willing, willing to see if there's any opposition to that. Alright then, speakers, uh, how do we, this is the first time we've actually, you know, applied, been in this position. Is there a way Mr. Denwe can communicate that to them?
You just did.
They're all on now, so, okay. Alright, speakers, thank you for indulging with us. We'll be back with you as soon as we're done with our four information agenda items. So uh, alright, so we begin with the all-important superintendent's estimate of needs and capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And I think, I believe we do begin with Dr. Spence.
We do, yes ma'am. Thank you Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Verbanek and school board members.
And if I may direct my colleagues' attention, forgive me, Dr. Spence, uh, to your spiral notebooks if you want to read along.
Yes ma'am, I was gonna bring, bring that up. So I'm, I'm pleased to, to bring you this evening my superintendent's estimate of needs for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year budget. As the chair just mentioned, you should have in front of you a copy of the estimate of needs as well as a copy of the proposed uh capital improvement program for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three through twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, if you can believe that. As you're aware, this uh presentation kicks off the board's uh customary budget development process, although as you know, there's been an ongoing budget development process to get to this point. This follows discussions and presentations about school division priorities that began really during a retreat in July of two thousand twenty-one and that have continued throughout the year. I'm proud to note that despite the ongoing challenges of managing the education of our future citizens while also keeping them as safe as possible during a health pandemic, I present you tonight with a document that reflects and accounts for the resilience and the dedication of our entire staff and a plan to retain them and to attract more to join our team. It's important to note that while I'm going through this presentation, uh, we do have a new governor and his administration's plan for education funding are still unknown and may affect uh this estimate of needs. So something we have learned during the last two years is the importance of face-to-face learning, especially for our youngest students. And I'm so proud to note that since the beginning of the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we have been able to keep our schools open for instruction five days a week. To do that, we worked very closely with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health to not only monitor our layered prevention strategies, but also to track the cases of COVID nineteen in our buildings and to host vaccination clinics in our schools. We know this pandemic has had dramatic impacts on our resources and our staff, both instructional and non-instructional, and it's forced to focus on effective hiring and retention strategies. But again, we've stayed open and we've continued to ensure that our students are loved and cared for and that they feel a deep sense of belonging in our classrooms. And above all else, we've been able to maintain our focus on teaching and learning that meets our high expectations for students and for ourselves. The proposed eight hundred and seventy-two point five million dollar operating budget encompasses the wide range of requirements that it takes to run our schools every day. We will continue to provide the essentials to our students and employees along with the resources and compensation that they and our community expect. However, simply moving forward as we have is not going to be enough. We know we must be more competitive in the job market, not only for educators, but for the support staff who keep our students fed, get them from place to place and keep them safe while in our care. We must plan for and embrace new and better wages if we are to effectively compete for qualified individuals to fill those positions. Therefore, for the school board and for this administration, compensation remains a top priority for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. We've heard that over and over again from you. Given what our staff members have been able to accomplish in these extraordinary circumstances, I think this is both appropriate and warranted. To keep compensation at the top of our list, we made it a priority to take a careful look at central office spending and to ensure we focused on bolstering the programs we have in place rather than focusing on any new initiatives. I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish in this proposed budget because we've tightened about where we could and held where we've had to. For the second year in a row, we are recommending a four and a half percent increase in cost of living adjustment and a half percent step increase for those reaching or below top of scale for all employees. In addition, as has been recommended by our human resources team, we are recommending the reclassification of teacher assistants and security assistants to pay grade ten and we are recommending providing allowances for those with bachelor's degrees. These decisions are in line with recent actions taken by the board to adjust pay grades for other work groups, including bus drivers and custodians. We've also budgeted for an increased allowance for those employees with advanced degrees, which is part of a three-year phase in that began last year. And because our efforts to secure classroom substitutes with increased pay have proven to be effective, as you heard earlier tonight, we are also recommending increasing our base substitute pay from one hundred dollars to one hundred and fifty dollars a day on a permanent basis. On top of these pay increases, we also thought it would be important to make substantial progress on healthcare costs for our employees. We know that healthcare premiums in VB CPS are currently higher than we'd like them to be. The board's been clear that we need to address this and we know that lowered healthcare costs will make us more competitive in recruitment and retention and allow us to make substantial gains in rankings among other school divisions in Hampton Roads. As noted earlier by looking carefully at spending, we are able to recommend a significant investment in lowering premiums. While compensation increases are our top priority, this board understands there are other needs that also must be addressed in this estimate of needs. We must bolster the resources for our growing English as a Second Language families by increasing the number of instructional positions across all grade levels by eight uh and by adding bilingual support staff to our family and community engagement welcome center. To maintain the safety of the learning environment and continuity of operations in times of crisis and disaster, it's become increasingly clear that we need to hire an emergency manager who will be responsible for disaster mitigation preparedness, planning, response and recovery to support the school division's emergency operations plan. Also important to note is at the beginning of, uh, is that beginning in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the city and VB CPS will no longer share legal services. We will bring city legal staff under the VB CPS budget and will establish our own legal department within this budget. Finally, we're pleased to continue to support the environmental studies program at the Brock Center. The reason we are on such firm financial ground today and of course why we're able to provide our students and staff with the remarkable amount of support we did during these extraordinary times is thanks to our award-winning budget and finance staff and to you, our school board. Together, we've managed federal pandemic relief funding and will continue to do so for the duration of those grants. And at the same time, we have proven again and again the importance of and our ability to be good stewards of the significant public investment in our schools. I'm very grateful to work for a school division where we do this by putting students and staff first and keeping our focus on providing a world-class education. And we are doing just that. Despite the pandemic-related obstacles we continue to face, VB CPS continues to thrive. For the thirteenth consecutive year, Virginia Beach City Public Schools reached record levels with respect to the on-time graduation rate, which now stands at ninety-four point nine percent for the two thousand twenty-one cohort and the lowest recorded dropout rate of two point seven percent. VB CPS also performed, outperformed Virginia's rates of ninety-three percent for on-time graduation and four point three percent for dropouts. Once again, amidst a global health crisis, our graduation rate went up, not down, and I'm so pleased that we were able to be together in person for our commencement ceremonies thanks to meticulous planning and hard work that made those ceremonies at the amphitheater so memorable for our graduates. It's just another example of how much we'll do for our families here in Virginia Beach. Here are just a few more accomplishments from another remarkable year. The Virginia Department of Education released pass rates from the two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-one SOL tests, which were the first state assessments administered in two years. And even under the extraordinary circumstances of the past school year, students in Virginia Beach City Public Schools tested better than many local school divisions and bested the statewide average by a wide margin. Many of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one graduating class were offered, members of the two thousand twenty-one graduating class were offered more than sixty-two million dollars in scholarships, a thirty percent increase over the previous year. VB CPS teamed up over the last year with Naval Air Station Oceana on Project Search, which connects high school students with intellectual and developmental disabilities to internships and on-the-job training. NAS Oceana is the Navy's first installation in the country to host the innovative program and our partnership supports our military families and provides pathways to building student independence. For demonstrating our major commitment to supporting students and families connected to our nation's military, twenty-seven Virginia Beach schools were named two thousand twenty, twenty-one Virginia Purple Star Schools. Awards are presented by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on the Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which I continue to be proud to serve on. VB CPS was recognized by the American School Counselor Association for delivering an exemplary school counseling program at Rosemont Elementary School. This is the first time in the division's history for a school to earn this award and Rosemont is one of only two schools in Hampton Roads to achieve the honor of a recognized ASCA model program. This demonstrates the effect school counseling services has on supporting student achievement and academic achievement and social emotional development. Windsor Oaks Elementary School was one of only seven schools in Virginia to be named a two thousand twenty-one National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. Other division schools that previously received this award are Tallwood Elementary School, Great Neck Middle School and Hermitage Elementary School. Windsor Oaks was also nominated by the Virginia Department of Education for this award based on data that reflected the school's dedication to closing achievement gaps for students with disabilities and African-American students. Even when they couldn't be physically in our school building, sixteen hundred and fifty-nine volunteers found ways to help our students and staff and contributed nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-seven hours to our school communities during the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. And we are so pleased that many of those volunteers are now finding their way back into our buildings. Our beach bags program distributed more than nineteen thousand bags to families in need and the Virginia Beach Education Foundation gave out one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in grants for innovative teaching and learning in our schools. During the pandemic, the Office of Food Services, Central Office and School Cafeteria staff worked onsite as essential personnel supporting USDA and VDOE school nutrition programs efforts and feeding our community's children non-stop from the beginning. Our staff offered at times three meals per day as well as a four-day weekend, uh, four-day weekend meal bags and seven-day meal packs during school breaks and holidays and our Office of Food Services served more than eight million meals between March seventeenth of two thousand twenty and June twenty-second of two thousand twenty-one. Our new virtual peer tutoring program connected four hundred and twenty-three tutors with six hundred and seventy-seven students. As a part of our continued commitment to carry out our board policy five dash four educational equity, VB CPS completed a division-wide equity assessment and is now in the process of forming an administrative equity planning committee to draft the VB CPS equity plan. The VB CPS Department of Technology issued one thousand one hundred and twelve hotspots to families who had issues with internet access and for twelve consecutive years, we have been named one of the best communities for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for outstanding commitment- Association of Music Merchants Foundation for Outstanding Commitment to Music Education, noting that less than 5% of school districts across the nation earned this prestigious award. These successes reflect what we already know. We have a talented team of staff and teachers who worked to make a difference for every child in VBCPS. We have committed families who partner with us every day to ensure their children have an amazing learning experience, and we have a community that supports this work and expects great things from us. None of this should be taken to mean that we don't have our challenges. We do. We've heard about some of them tonight. Just like every school division in the Commonwealth and across the country, this pandemic has created significant challenges that we must address. But I am confident that together with the resources outlined here tonight, we can do anything, and the children of this city will continue to thrive. Of course, in addition to our operating budget, VBCPS recognizes the need for ongoing capital improvements across the school division, which is another part of our commitment to ensure that every student and every staff member is in an environment that is healthy, safe, and conducive for teaching and learning. This capital improvement program funds the maintenance of nearly 11 million square feet of space by investing in our existing infrastructure through projects such as re-roofing, making HVAC improvements, and replacing outdated playground equipment. This year's CIP provides an opportunity to make even more aggressive gains in our modernization and replacement program. To that end, the proposed CIP fully funds the Princess Anne High School and the Betty F. Williams Bayside Sixth Grade Campus replacement projects, and significantly increases funding for the replacement of Bayside High School. The construction of the Classroom Edition at Lynnhaven Middle School to support the Achievable Dream Secondary School Program is funded and underway with a planned 2023 opening. Of course, even with all of this, it's important that we continue the capital improvements conversation with our city leaders, legislators, and community to ensure our continued progress. As you can see, we've built upon the lessons learned over the last years, bringing every bit of our innovation and creativity to bear, and I know there's so much more work ahead for all of us. We will do everything possible to keep the children, teachers, and support staff of Virginia Beach safe in their learning environments and to provide them and their families with the tools they need to thrive and succeed in the next school year. I recognize we have disagreements about how we do that, but no matter what, I look forward to working with you all on a budget that will keep Virginia Beach City Public Schools a world-class school division. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Crystal Pate, to dive into the details of this estimate of needs a little more deeply.
Thank you, Dr. Spence, and welcome, Ms. Pate.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, school board members. I will share some additional information regarding the superintendent's estimate of needs and then turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman to cover the capital improvement program. As you heard from Dr. Spence's remarks, we took a big swing at some very important items for the division. In this presentation, I'm going to mainly cover the school operating budget. However, the estimate of needs document provides a great deal of information on the budget development process, details on the school board's funds, our budgetary priorities, challenges and highlights, information on special revenue funds, historical enrollment and budget expenditures per pupil. There's also a section on personnel resource allocations and staffing standards and guidelines. This information may be helpful to you during the budget development process. Please note that this estimate of needs is based on the prior governor's proposed state budget, which is not adopted, and as Dr. Spence mentioned, we could see changes to his existing budget depending on the outcome of the General Assembly. To begin, I want to share information on the school operating fund and varying breakdowns. This slide shows you our revenue sources and related percentages that comprise the school operating fund. As you can see, the local contribution from the city is the largest funding source at 49.7%. State funding, including state sales tax, make up the second-largest source at 48.2%. The federal source comes in at 1.5%, and the other sources of revenue make up the remaining 0.5%. When we look at the school operating fund by major category classification, as you would expect, the instructional portion is the largest at 73.3%. Operation and maintenance is the second-largest portion at 11.8%. People, transportation, and admin attendance and health are at 5.2%, and technology is coming in at 4.6%. It is important to note that these specific categories are prescribed by the state board and listed in Virginia Code. Our chart of accounts is built around these categories for budgeting and reporting purposes. This last pie chart shows school operating expenditures by type. As you can see, we are a very labor-intensive business, and combining our personnel and fringe benefit costs totaled just over 85%. The rest of the other types total a little under the 15%, and most of that 15% is nondiscretionary due to items such as ongoing contractual obligations, fuel, utilities, et cetera. So only a small portion of that 15% allows any discretionary spending or flexibility. This next slide is pretty busy. You should be able to see that in your presentation. This kind of goes through our budget balancing after our discussions with the Planning and Performance Monitoring Committee and Dr. Spence. I'm not going to go line by line. Dr. Spence highlighted a number of the items in his opening remarks, but I am going to write a little bit more of a breakdown. If you want to look on page 23 of your superintendent's estimate of needs, I'll go over that first line, what makes up that first line of additional estimated revenue of about $47 million. So based on the latest information we have, we are estimating that additional revenue over our fiscal year 2022 adopted budget from all sources to be almost $47 million. Over half of this additional revenue, $26 million, is expected from the revenue-sharing formula with the city. The state is expected to increase by 11.6 million, and state sales tax is estimated to increase approximately 10 million. As mentioned during our five-year forecast presentation, we are going to begin to phase out the use of one-time funds in our school reserve account. So this first year, we are reducing that amount by 50% of the fiscal year 2022 budgeted amount, which results in a reduction in revenue of approximately $667,000. The largest use of these additional revenues will be used to provide a 5% raise to employees. Note that the state is providing us some funding to provide this raise to SOQ positions, and based on our composite index, we are to provide a local match for this group of employees, and in turn, we are funding the raise for our non-SOQ positions. It was mentioned about the substantial investment we are making in an effort to lower employee health insurance payments. Working with our third-party consultant, it was determined with an investment of $8.5 million, we can expect to see a decrease in employee health premiums in the range of 40% to 50% for active and retirees. We also work to keep the permanent increase that Dr. Spence mentioned in the substitute rate going from $100 to $115 a day in an effort to recruit substitutes. This is our second year providing an increase in allowances for advanced degrees at a cost of about $1.2 million. We are funding 50% of the costs for allowances to security and teacher assistants who hold a bachelor's degree. Dr. Spence mentioned bolstering our resources for our growing ESL families. So you see the funding listed here for the eight additional ESL teachers and the cost to revise current employee contracts from 10-month to 10-month extended. You also see the approximate cost of $503,000 to establish our legal department, since we no longer have shared legal services with the city. We began the process to convert our 10-month custodians to 12-month positions for the latter part of this fiscal year in an effort to recruit and retain staff. You can see the annual cost for this change to continue is estimated at $1.1 million. We have added some funding for technology and system maintenance, such as security software, backup disaster recovery, and computer software like ClassLink, Let's Talk, and Qualtrics. We also needed to increase funding for Risk Management to about $2.2 million. This is mainly due to some increase in our claims. We are seeing where we are going to have premium increases in our insurance policies, and we also are funding our IBNRs, which are really incurred but not reported liabilities that we have to book at the end of each year. And finally, to balance this estimate of needs, we made some baseline adjustments to personnel and fringe benefit line items using current spending levels to establish future funding requirements, recognizing employee turnover and vacancies, and realigning positions taking into account estimated enrollment. We were also able to do some targeted reductions to non-personnel line items where we believe the budget could be reduced based on expenditure patterns. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman to cover the capital
We've already received a bit of the highlights, so I'm going to jump right into it. Construction has started on the Classroom Edition at Lynnhaven Middle School to support the Anne Achievable Dream Academy Secondary School Program. The project is currently scheduled to be complete in time for school opening in September 2023. Our next three school replacement projects, Prince Anne High School, Betty F. Williams, and Bayside Sixth, and the Bayside High School, are all included in the CIP with Prince Anne High School and Betty F. Williams projects both fully funded through the six-year CIP. We also see that through the proposed use of our 2020-2021 reversion funds, together with state construction grants included in the outgoing governor's proposed budget, we've been able to provide significantly more funding earlier in the CIP for all three of these much-needed projects, particularly for Bayside High School. This, together with the ongoing PPEA process, provides us an opportunity to potentially deliver these three projects sooner than we had previously projected at a overall lower This CIP, while dedicated to resources to our longstanding modernization replacement program, also continues our commitment to maintaining our $11 million square feet The total projected cost of the six-year CIP, including appropriations to date, is approaching $650 million, with year one, 2022-23, proposed at the $83.2 million. These amounts are reflective of Alternative A of our funding sources. And here's a breakdown of those numbers. You'll see throughout the CIP the continued use of charter bonds and public facility revenue bonds, and a small but steady increase in the use of Pago funding from the operating budget. You will also see this board's commitment from last year towards continuing to reinvest in at least $11 to $12 million annually in reversion funds into the CIP. The single biggest change this year, for the first time in more than a decade, includes the potential help from Richmond in the form of state construction grants. Governor Northam included $21.4 million in grant funding in his proposed budget. You will be able to see, after studying this funding summary chart in more detail during the budget process, that the inclusion of state construction grants has provided much-needed additional funding in the three modernization replacement projects, providing an opportunity to advance these projects sooner. Because the state construction grants have not gone final, we have also included an Alternative B to our funding sources that did not include that $21 million. This option reflects zero funding from the state construction grant, and that's highlighted in green. And if the state construction grant is not approved, here's the Alternative B funding summary. You can see the corresponding year-one adjustments in green, which include a $1 million reduction in renovations and replacements various, a $10 million reduction in the Betty F. Williams Bayside Sixth replacement, and a little over $10 million in reduction to Bayside High School. We look forward to working with you over the next two months and finalizing the CIP and responding to your questions, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Pate.
So what's next? February through March, we will be holding budget workshops and public hearings. We expect the board to approve the proposed budget on March 8th. Within a week of board approval, budget documents will be sent over to city staff. We will present the budget to city council in April and expect city council to approve the division's budget along with theirs by May 15th. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Spence for some closing remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Pate. Hope you all can see what a great job she's doing in her role as chief finance officer, and the budget development team continues to do outstanding work. I know typically, this presentation would have occurred at a special meeting, which is just an opportunity to introduce the estimate of needs to you. I also know typically during information sessions, there's an opportunity to ask questions. Certainly, we can start entertaining questions this evening. However, I'd also know you've got a lot to digest here, and what we would ask, in addition to an opportunity to ask tonight, is in advance of the first public hearing and budget workshop, which is next Tuesday, which I'm sure we'll have a reminder of at the end of the meeting, in advance of that, if you could begin sending questions to Mrs. Pate and myself so that we can be prepared. I think you remember the format typically at those meetings, is we begin to address your questions and then engage with you in discussion about the estimate of needs. So if you've got initial questions, if you'd begin sending those to us, we can be prepared to answer that next week during the first hearing on this. Excuse me, the first workshop on this.
Okay. So Dr. Spence has offered, for any immediate questions, we have some time. All right, Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Hughes?
Just a quick question. Just want to verify that this is online for the public to review?
It will be. It'll be online tomorrow. We wanted to present it.
Where would the public go to find these documents?
You know.
On the Budget Development site?
There's a Budget Development site.
Is there a tab that says Budget Development, or can we put it on our homepage so it's obvious so people can find it?
We can actually talk to David and see if we can't put it, like, sell a link that you can get right to it.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, Mrs. Hughes?
So, one of the things that I think might be timely, since we're discussing staffing issues at the school level, is we have a la-ha hut of central administration employees. And I know that, you know, people have been here a long time. They do a good job. You move them up. But I think it's, we need to look at, like, freezing any more hiring at the central administration level until we get our schools where we need to be. And while I would not advocate for just going out and firing people, people do retire, and I think we need to look at maybe consolidating some job descriptions through attrition so that more of the money is actually getting to the schools and the students and the teachers as opposed to building more central administration. As we're looking at budgeting, because I'd like to see more of the budgeting going into the school buildings than central administration.
I guess I would say quickly in response to that, certainly, every time we have positions that become vacant in central office, we take a look at those. We've done some consolidations in the past, as recently as last year, and we always take a look at that. I think it's important to remember that the folks here do really important and good work as well, and that it is the superintendent's responsibility to assess the value of that work and make sure they're making recommendations to you all on that. I feel like I've consistently done that with you all as it was reorganized. I think my senior leadership team would tell you, really hard to get a position passed when it comes to central office hiring, and we'll continue to be that way. And as we see opportunities to consolidate or to do other things that make us more efficient, we'll continue to look at that.
Okay. Anybody else right now? Madam Clerk, would you confirm the start time next Tuesday? Is it 5:00?
It will be 5:00.
Okay. So that's a reminder to colleagues and the public, and of course, that there'll be the usual posting. So thank you, Ms. Pate, for all the work leading up to this, and we look forward to some really good constructive discussion this month.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I see Dr. Saltner waiting in the wings for the school calendar. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. This evening, we are presenting you with the draft calendar options that have been created for consideration of the upcoming 22-23 school year. Before we move on this, as a reminder, the current division calendar is always available on the division's website. It can be found by visiting VB Schools, scrolling down just a bit, and clicking the link to view full calendar. This is our current calendar timeline. It's our intent to have the finalized calendar available to the public and on the website in March 2022. We'd like to carry this to our next meeting for action. When draft calendars are being created, a number of factors need to be taken into consideration. Many of these items are listed on the screen, and they include the total number of instructional days for students, which should total 181, the observation and length of holidays and breaks, adding staff days at the end of each quarter, keeping the number of days in each quarter of a semester equitable to ensure an equal distribution of days and seat hours per course. per course, and limiting adjusted dismissal days as we ran into our transportation issues. Before we move forward, you may remember previously, starting school prior to Labor Day required a waiver. However, in recent years, the General Assembly passed new legislation amending provisions in the Code of Virginia regarding the setting of school calendars and the first day that students may be required to attend school. Accordingly, it is no longer necessary for school divisions to seek waivers to begin the school year prior to Labor Day. Additionally, school divisions in Virginia may set the school calendars such that the first day students are required to attend is up to 14 days before Labor Day. Those divisions that begin the school year prior to Labor Day must close each school in the school division that Friday before Labor Day and Labor Day itself. We recognize that people have personal preferences regarding the start date for school. However, there are a variety of benefits to starting school prior to Labor Day, and in recent years, there seems to have been a shift in preference for starting school before Labor Day. One of the primary benefits of a pre-Labor Day consideration is that it would allow our students to have several additional days or weeks in the classroom prior to the start of AP testing, SAT and IB testing, allow students to have those extra weeks in the classroom, and it also would align with divisions in Northern Virginia and west of 95, Washington, DC. Most of the other parts of our country start pre-Labor Day. Apparently, VPCPS students are not afforded the same testing preparation time that many other students receive. It's important to note that each year, more and more school divisions and state are moving to a pre-Labor Day start. Locally, these divisions include Newport News, Williamsburg, James City County, and 81% of the school divisions in our state. In the fall of 2019, a survey was sent out simply asking, are you in favor of Virginia Beach City Public Schools starting school before Labor Day? At that time, roughly 64% of the nearly 18,500 respondents were opposed. You'll see in just a moment how much that has shifted in our community in just three years. Just as a note, I want to point out that the response count on the graph that you're seeing for each stakeholder category will not match the total response count because survey takers were allowed to choose more than one option when telling us who they were. For example, someone might be a parent and a staff member, and they were able to tell us so by selecting more than one option. So said another way, their individual responses would show up as both the parent and staff member categories. For the first time this year, we put out a draft calendar survey, meaning we got more feedback than ever before on which calendar option our community preferred. The survey was distributed via Alert Now to all VBCPS parents, families, staff, partners in ed, and calendar work group members. In addition, it was posted on the school division's website as a scrolling banner. It too linked to the survey. The survey was available January 25 through February 1. I'm sure many of you took the survey, but just to review, the survey asked which calendar of four options was most preferred and least preferred. It also asked what the most important factor was in choosing the preferred calendar choice. Lastly, only if the respondent chose a post-Labor Day calendar as their most preferred choice for '22-'23, they were also asked if they would consider a pre-Labor Day start for the '23-'24 school year. Before we go over these results, I want to offer the board and our viewers a quick overview of the calendars. Option 1 and 2 begin pre-Labor Day. Option 3 and 4 begin post-Labor Day. You can also see the number of days that are included in winter break. These numbers are not counting weekends. Here you're seeing the preferred calendars broken down by affiliation type: parent, student, instructional staff, non-instructional staff, community member, and then in the far-right column, the overall. As a quick reminder, option 1 and 2 offer the pre-Labor Day start, option 3 and 4 post-Labor Day start. According to this survey, the majority of stakeholders who took the survey preferred a pre-Labor Day start at 52% to 48%. Here's some other details. Parents were split between options 2 and 4. Students responding preferred 4. Instructional staff were split among two pre-Labor Day options, 1 and 2, and option 4, which was the post-Labor Day option, and non-instructional staff preferred 2. Community members responding preferred 2. Within the calendar work group, 75% preferred option 1 as their most preferred calendar. Additional data for you to consider includes, when asked what was the deciding factor in choosing their most preferred calendar, 42% of the calendar work group chose length of breaks, and 33% chose frequency of or placement of staff days. When the stakeholder survey went out, the most influential deciding factor in choosing a most preferred calendar were the start date of the school year and the length of breaks. The survey then asked respondents to select their least preferred calendar option. Here you're seeing the least preferred calendar broken down by affiliation type: parent, student, instructional staff, non-instructional staff, community member, and then the far-right, the overall. In addition, respondents' least preferred calendar was pre-Labor Day option 2. However, this calendar was the option that began school August 23, roughly two weeks prior to Labor Day. Overall, the calendar that received the smallest number of votes for least favorite was option 1, which is also pre-Labor Day, but offers a start date just a few days prior to Labor Day. Additionally, within the calendar work group, 46% expressed that option 4 was their least Are you staying with me? Next? Yes, it is. Okay. Next, the survey identified the percent of respondents who, overall, preferred a pre- or post-Labor Day start. As you can see here, the totals are pretty evenly split, with a slight preference to a pre-Labor Day start. 52% preferred pre-Labor Day, 48% preferred post-Labor Day. To further explain, 52% of individuals preferred either option 1 or 2, and 48% preferred either option 3 or 4. Mrs. Williams, are you paying attention? Also of note is that if an individual chose a post-Labor Day preference for this year, they were asked if they would consider a pre-Labor Day start for the '23-'24 school year. This question was added after hearing from both our calendar work group and our teacher assembly that some people may be open to a pre-Labor Day start but would rather ease into it and wait until next school year. Of the 9,227 individuals who responded to this question, 2,277 agreed they would consider a pre-Labor Day start for the following school year, '23-'24. Taking the information at hand...
I'm sorry, Dr. Saltner, you have to go back because everybody's looking too quizzical. Is that correct? Because that would imply that less people said yes to pre-Labor Day?
So this is only from the group that said they didn't want to start pre-Labor Day. This was only from the group who selected a preference to start after Labor Day. We then went back to that group and said, why is that? Would you think about starting pre-Labor Day if it was another year away? And 25% of that group said, yep, we would think about that.
All right, because that was otherwise inconsistent with the first slide above.
Right, but this is only the group who preferred a post-Labor Day start. 25% of them said, if you waited a year, I could get behind it. Does that make sense? Yeah, yeah. Well, 25% of that group, that was the slight minority of the preferences overall.
Taking the information at hand, as previously mentioned, 52% of people preferred a pre-Labor Day start this year. Of the individuals who indicated they preferred a post-Labor Day start, they were asked if they would consider a pre-Labor Day start for '23-'24. Of these individuals polled, 2,277 or 12% indicated that yes, they would consider a pre-Labor Day start for next school year's calendar. That means as a division and community, we may have as many as 64% of individuals who would prefer or considering in the near future a pre-Labor Day start. Taking you back in comparison to 2019 survey, only 36% of respondents would consider that pre-Labor Day start. We recognize the difficult decisions surrounding school calendar implementation, so it's important that we provide the board with as much information as possible from division stakeholders, especially when looking at the possibility of this big change, and hence, the deep data dive we just did. We received feedback from a variety of voices during this process, including those within the calendar work group and teacher assembly, as well as from folks who took the survey and had questions about why the work group created the calendar drafts that they did. Highlights of the pre-Labor Day calendar focused on the appreciation for flexibility of staff days placed throughout the year, allowed time for grading, conferences, and professional development, and the biggest preference, the much longer winter break. That was something that was preferred, hands down, by the overwhelming majority. That said, many folks asked why there was not an option than offered an earlier school year end date if we're potentially looking to start the school year earlier. The reason for this is because a pre-Labor Day option allows for more built-in, more breaks built in, teacher workdays, and ending the school year earlier negates that flexibility. Now, some school divisions seem to be able to have it all. They have longer breaks, more teacher workdays, and they end earlier. This is because they have extra seat minutes during the school day in order to meet the total seat hours needed by the state. Unfortunately, and because of limitations related to transportation, we are unable in Virginia Beach to accommodate this model without some of our students getting out of school after 4:52 PM. Let me explain. If we were to add eight minutes to each school day, and that means eight to elementary, and we have two runs for eight, you're up to 16, eight to middle, eight to high school, we would gain roughly four days in seat hours just by adding eight minutes. But the problem happens when we're delaying departure by over 30 minutes for our middle school students. You've got to add that eight minutes to each tier in order to make that happen. The highlights of the post-Labor Day calendar, including the possibility of students and staff working summer jobs through Labor Day, and the longer summer breaks are the highlights of that. The pushback for the post-Labor Day calendars included frustration and a lack of flexibility surrounding staff days to accomplish the tasks teachers and students are asked to fulfill. There was also strong opposition to the shortened winter breaks with the post-Labor Day start. So now, let's look at these calendars. We'll start with the current division calendar. You'll see the synopsis on the right side, and I'll let you take a moment to process The dislike of too many staff days front-loaded at the beginning of this year versus those used throughout the school year. There was definitely a dislike that we front-loaded too many days that were needed during the regular school year. The feedback we also received, so there's a preference of having longer holiday breaks. And there was also a dislike of not having an October staff day nor enough time for parent-teacher conferences, which occur at the end of each quarter for elementary schools, and typically cannot be done in one day. The appreciation of the quarters being spread mostly evenly, the dislike of not having a staff day at the end of each quarter, and we've heard that throughout the year, the appreciation of the staff day in March, and the dislike of school ending on a Friday versus a Thursday. I'd like to say, in a perfect world, we would meet every calendar need or preference for every student, staff member, and family. This would likely include a post-Labor Day start, multiple staff days during the year, limited adjusted dismissal days, a three-day break at Thanksgiving, and two weeks for winter break. However, it just isn't possible. There are not enough days in a year to meet every demand with our state-required seat hours while also starting post-Labor Day. Now, that doesn't mean alternative options couldn't be considered, such as lengthening the school day or starting school before Labor Day. However, I am saying this because I want the board, the division's leadership, parents, families, students, staff, and community members to know, we do hear all of you, but at this juncture, we are working with state and local requirements and parameters to give our students the best educational access they can have in a successful, healthy, and driven environment to make them the best future adults. Let's go ahead and review the calendars that I attempted to share data with you on for the '22-'23 school year. Four draft calendars were created. Two calendars offered a pre-Labor Day school start date, and two offered a post-Labor Day school start date. These are the pre-Labor Day calendars. The primary difference in these calendars is the start date. Option 1 has a starting August 29, and option 2 has a starting August 23. Other notable differences: the number of holidays during Thanksgiving, two days versus three days, the number of winter breaks, nine days versus 11 days. In addition, option 1 has Election Day as a staff day, and this would have to be taken to and approved by the division's policy review committee. If they did approve use of Election Day as a staff day, the calendar would have to be adjusted to reflect this decision, and I'll revisit that point in just a few moments. These are the post-Labor Day options. Due to the limited number of days between Labor Day and June 15 or June 16, these calendars are much more similar than the pre-Labor Day calendars where we had greater flexibility. The main differences between... The main differences between the two: the number of winter breaks, six days versus seven, and the last day of school being on a Thursday versus a Friday. After hearing from our community that the majority of them are open to a pre-Labor Day start, we think our best option to ease us into this change is Option 1. This is the calendar the administration and the Calendar Work Group favor for many reasons. Let me detail those. This is the pre-Labor Day option with the latest possible start. It allows for longer winter breaks, which has been specifically requested by many of our families, particularly our military families who would like to use this for travel; additional staff days throughout the calendar year, which respect the plea of teachers for a staff day at the end of each marking period to be used for both record-keeping and allow room for parent conferences; it allows our students to have additional days or weeks in the classroom prior to the start of Advanced Placement or AP testing, the SAT, Scholastic Attitude Test, and International Baccalaureate or IB testing. One caveat is that instead of Election Day being a full holiday, it would be a staff day. However, staff would need to be allowed maximum flexibility to be able to vote. This would require the Policy Review Committee to act during their February 10 meeting, which would need to occur prior to the board's approval of this calendar. It is our intent to ask the board to approve this calendar at our February 22 meeting. I've given you a lot, so let's do a deep dive into our recommended calendar. Our school division year begins July 1, as is standard, and there are no instructional days in July. In August, there are five teacher workdays before school begins. These days are denoted in dark blue. During these teacher workdays, we would hold teacher orientation, professional development, and allow school principals time to work with their teachers before school begins. In previous years, teachers may have worked as many as seven or eight days before the first day of school for students. Overwhelmingly, the feedback from instructional staff was there were just too many front-loaded days and not enough days during the school year. Also, in August is the first day of school for students. You'll see is August 29, and that is denoted in green. In September, you'll see- in September, you'll see two red boxes as part of the VDOE's guidance. It's, "School starts are prior to Labor Day. They must observe the longer weekend for Labor Day with that Friday proceeding and the Monday actual Labor Day." As you can see, all students and staff would be off September 2 through Monday, September 5, resuming classes for everyone September 6. Although school begins in August, the instructional year is actually only beginning four days earlier than it would in a standard year where school would begin the Tuesday after Labor Day. These four days give us added flexibility to use during the school year. Let's look at October through December. In October, you'll see that there is a staff day. This marks a rough halfway point within the first quarter. In November, you'll see there are many more days to discuss. First up, you'll see the green block on November 4. That's the last day of the first quarter. Moving to the second week in November, you see two dark blue days. These are staff days, which means no school for children. Now, I know many of you may be thinking, "Why two staff days here?" Let me explain. As the first quarter ends, this is an extremely pivotal point for our students. This is a time to identify if a student needs additional supports, isn't meeting target goals, is struggling. These two days are for their teacher to review and enter grades, as well as reach out to parents or guardians for parent-teacher conferences if needed. And these are especially important to our elementary teachers and our elementary students. Midway through that week, you'll see another green block, and that indicates the beginning of Quarter 2. And of course, that week ends with the observation of the Veterans Day holiday for all. At the end of the month, you'll see the yellow block, which indicates an early release to be the start of the Thanksgiving holiday. Then, as in the standard year, the Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving break are both days off for everyone. In December, you see the winter break holiday. This school year, we began our winter break on December 22 and had seven weekdays within the break. This calendar, which you're observing, allows for a nine-day winter break, eight days within December, and one day within January. Before moving to the next few months, I'd like to mention a few things. First, and again, November 8 is Election Day. This typically is a full day off for all students and staff since many of our buildings are used for voting sites. However, it was noted that many divisions in Virginia have begun using this day as a staff day. By using this day as a staff day versus a full holiday, we're able to allow that second day for parent-teacher conferences. However, this decision would ultimately be up to Policy Review Board, Committee, and the board. If it was deemed that this day should not be a staff day and instead should be a full day off, we would need to create a flex day, a flex staff day, after the end of the school year to account for the correct number of contractual staff days. Second, we recognize that most people appreciated the superintendent's decision to allow all staff and students to have the day before Thanksgiving off this year. This calendar does not include the day before Thanksgiving off. However, we could make that happen if needed by moving the adjusted dismissal day to December 21 instead of where it is currently on November 23. Doing this would give the calendar three full days off for Thanksgiving, and the winter break still gets us slightly, out slightly earlier than it did this current school year. Third, we want to recognize this calendar does not offer a two-week winter break. To do this, we would need to either, one, start school one additional week early in August, and two, extend the school day hours for all; three, remove many or even most of the staff days during the year, which put a huge burden on our teachers and staff since this is time that they desperately need to do their grades and other requirements of their position. Let's take a look at the next January through March. Starting with January, we have the final day of the winter break with January 2 indicated as a red-blocked holiday. As a note, this is done because typically, when a holiday is on a Saturday, it is observed the Friday before, and when a holiday is on a Sunday, it is observed the following Monday after. Also in January, the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday is represented by a red block on January 16. Moving to the end of the January, the green block for January 27 is the end of the second quarter. The dark blue block indicates a staff day, which is taking place between the end of one quarter and the beginning of the next. The final representation in January is January 31, which is green and indicates the beginning of the third quarter. February has one red block, which indicates the observation of President's Day on February 20. March has one dark blue day, which is a staff day. This has been highly requested by many instructional staff members for many, many years. The length of time between the staff day in January until spring break in April is just a very long stretch. This March staff day allows for much-meet-ed time to grade and plan. It's roughly a halfway point within the quarter. April through June. April 6 is green, which indicates the end of the third quarter. As in the previous quarters, there is a staff day, the day after the end of the quarter, to allow for grading and planning needs. Moving on to the next week, which is all red, spring break for our entire division. Then, the first day back from spring break, April 17 is green, and that begins for the start of Quarter 4. The only day in May that has any day notations is May 29, which is Memorial Day, a full holiday for all. Wrapping up the school year in June, we have June 15, which is an adjusted dismissal day for students. This day also indicates the end of the quarter and the end of the instructional school year. As in typical years, there is a staff day after the last day of school so that grades and any other work needed may be finalized. And the red day is Juneteenth, which is a holiday, however neither students nor staff would be in school for this holiday unless we decide to add a flex day to the calendar, June 20, to make up for Election Day being turned into a full day, holiday, rather than a staff day. Now, we will again provide you the image of our recommended calendar. As you digest all of this information, I think it's important that I point out whether the calendar begins pre or post-Labor Day, the number of 181 instructional days remains the same, and therefore, the days off, whether during the summer or breaks, remains relatively the same. It's a choice as to whether we afford our students and staff time during the school year to recoup, to re-energize, to focus or refocus, or whether we keep a longer break in the summer. Additionally, we are also currently working closely with Human Resources to align our calendars with our employee-work-group calendars. Gave you a whole lot of information, and I'm going to go ahead and take questions and do the best I can with that, and I'm going to step just for a moment and get my water.
Okay, yes, we already have quite a queue growing here, so we begin with Mrs. Riggs.
Okay, I like this calendar. But my question is, because we've gotten it from several people, and I know what you talked about in August, the week before, the staff work week. Is it possible to take one of those days and put it in January for another workday so they would have the two workdays because of us going to the new 4x4 schedule? And all of that entails with getting, you know, exams, whatever, that the high school teachers have asked us about. So how hard would that be to do?
You need to find it, take it, you're going to take from Peter to pay Paul.
Right, exactly.
And so, we have tried to meet the needs of the elementary school conferences, and as such, we would probably need to take a day from there. So we would need, it's like, it's very much a math equation. We have a certain number of days, and if we need to add, we need to take from somewhere.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Can you take it from-
I think the issue is that staff day is not an instructional day during that. You're talking about during the work week in August.
Yeah, one of the work weekdays.
Yeah, and if you just plunked it in on the day prior to the quarter starting, you'd lose an instructional day. So we would have to find an instructional day elsewhere. In other words, we'd have to add one or start one day earlier on the calendar.
Okay, gotcha.
Or add one at the end of the year. I mean, it does kind of only, or take one of the holiday days away. So those are your sort of options to accomplish that.
Okay, I wanted to know what they would be, you know, what kind of options they would have.
Dr. Spence will be taking your additional questions.
Hold that thought. We'll hold that thought because I have more to add to that later. But now we have Mrs. Melnick and then Ms. Owens.
Okay. So, looking at that calendar that you just showed us, can you explain what you mean by the flexibility that would be afforded teachers on Election Day? What does that mean?
What we're trying to do is account for a staff day. And we would need to move that staff day to the end of the year, to the 20th, Juneteenth, as a flex day for staff if we do not use it on Election Day. Currently, the Policy Review Committee has said that neither staff nor students would attend school on Election Day. We're proposing that we provide that work day on Election Day and give staff the flexibility to vote during that day.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to know. So vote or- is there built-in flex time that maybe they could leave to work the polls for a couple of hours?
Precisely. To arrive late to vote, to depart to vote, to respect the Policy Review Committee's decision to honor that day without adding an additional day at the end of the year as a flex day.
I'm asking if they have flex time. Are they allowed to leave for a couple hours to work a poll?
Certainly. That is what we would ask our principals to do to give maximum flexibility on this date.
Okay, if that's the case, then, okay.
All right, Ms. Owens, then Mrs. Hughes.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I know previous calendars that we've gotten have indicated in advance any virtual days. Are we planning for any virtual days in this upcoming year? And if not, is there any reasoning behind it? I know we were able to kind of work in some travel time after a holiday by doing a virtual day and still getting work done and working around some things. Are we just taking those out?
Our state superintendent issued guidelines that no longer allow us to have a virtual day. Those virtual days are reserved for inclement weather and currently for closures due to COVID.
Gotcha.
So we stopped, I believe. We had to do a correction mid-year in our calendar because of that state-issued superintendent's memo, so we don't have that option any longer.
Thank you. Also, I was one of the people who was questioning, "Why does Fairfax get to have it all?" And I know that there's a difference in seat time, and I think you said adding eight minutes, which we can't do because of the busing thing, but that would give us like four extra days. Are we able to look at adding a smaller number of minutes, like two or three minutes, and still gain a day or two and not put us over that timeframe of 4:56 or whatever it is for letting kids out?
I would certainly say that the senior leadership could consider that. Dr. Spence, if you would answer that question.
See, Jean, when I hit my button and it goes red, that means I can take this for you.
You got this. I'll back you up.
So, the convoluted answer is, yes, we can. We can have that conversation. We had a conversation during the high school start times conversation about how we could adjust the minutes for the day if we will move the high school time around. It makes it more complicated if we don't move the high school time. And we are concerned about transportation next year in general. We are concerned about our ability to provide the same level of transportation that we're currently providing without adjustment. And so, I'm hesitant to not combine this conversation about altering minutes of the day with understanding the transportation challenges that we're facing. So I would prefer we not make it part of the calendar conversation and instead, understand that it's probably going to have to be a richer conversation, and we don't have time to accomplish that and get a calendar done.
And that's fair. Hopefully, we can, down the road when we're looking at transportation, look at that opportunity of maybe catching a day or two by making smaller adjustments with that timeframe. My other, I guess, question, maybe question slash comment. We're showing the holidays on here that are observed with us not coming into school. We're showing the holidays on here that are observed with us not coming into school. Are we going to document any other major spiritual holidays with the understanding that we would, you know, not do any major events or testing on those days, though they are still school day?
Yeah, so I saw that come in from some of our students, which was an interesting request. So we have two calendars. We have the division calendar, which is kind of the PDF version. And then we have the live actual calendar that you can go in and it's interactive. And you can click through month by month, day by day on our school website. If you're not familiar with that, that exists. And where I'd recommend is that, because first of all, we already do. We send out every year to our schools a complete list of religious observances from the major religions. And we ask our schools not to schedule events on those days. I'm not going to say we've, in the past, said, don't schedule tests on those days because I think that could be complicating, although it's certainly something we're willing to have a conversation about, senior staff. We've got it on the docket. The, on the interactive calendar, I think we could list the specific observances. It's just, as you can see here, it's a little more complicated on this document to try to list all the observances.
Sure. And I guess as long as it's listed somewhere and that families are aware that that's where it's listed and just a a general kind of understanding of what it is we are shooting to do or not do on those days. And I agree, saying no testing on those days at all is kind of big and broad. But hopefully, something that is we're only scheduling things that can easily be made up. So we're not going to schedule audition to the play because you can't go back and re-audition it if they're not going to have another day for that. We're not going to have tryouts. If that's the only day that they're going to do tryouts, we're not going to have prom. If it's a test that you can come and do during a study block, then.
So I'll forward to the board, we'll forward to the board the memo that goes out to the principals at the beginning of the year with all of those dates on it so that you can see what that looks like. And then we can certainly put something on the web that shows all of that as well.
Okay, yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hughes.
So one of my questions, actually, you did answer because we did get feedback that people would be on board with an earlier start if there was an earlier end. But the days built in make sense. I have, one of the things that's concerning is starting at this coming up year. Because we've also gotten some feedback that people have already paid for vacations or, you know, maybe summer jobs, things like that. And I think that this is probably be more palatable to start next fall where people haven't already booked ahead. Has that been a consideration?
We're making the recommendation of the pre-Labor Day start and certainly the board's decision as to which direction we go. There are four options.
No, 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 I mean, like, like, say we go with option one. Does it need to be fall of '22? Because I think most, most of the feedback we've gotten is that if there is a change, they prefer be a year out because people have already, it's barely more than six months away. People have actually, like, some people aren't even going to be in town this first week that they would be in school. They already have vacations they've paid for, things like that. So.
And that's why we're, we're putting two, four options out there, and two are post-Labor Day and two are pre. So it is our recommendation that we not delay, that we move with that. And I think we are basing it on, I have to go back and pull that number, 54% of respondents who indicated that they would accept a pre-Labor Day start. There were those respondents who also stated that they preferred to wait for one year. And if I was not mistaken, here it is, 52% preferred the pre-Labor Day start compared to 48%. And then we looked at an additional 25%, if I'm not mistaken, that asked that we consider waiting for that by one year.
Okay. And then just two more quick things. One is, when you look at slides nine and 10, if you look at overall, it looks like number two is the most preferred. But then when you look at the next slide, it looks like number two is the least preferred. That's why we were confused over here on the bar charts.
Well, that's exactly correct.
That is right.
It's, it's interesting data, isn't it? But that's exactly correct. It was both.
That is how it came out?
The most preferred and then also the least preferred.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I just have one, it's not really a question, it's more a comment. I'm, I'm not sure adding two to three minutes into a school day adds extra value to education. I don't think they're going to get a whole lot out of two minutes.
Yes, they do.
But they lose a whole day if they're out. So I just, I would actually be against doing that. If we could find a better way to, you know, build another day in, that would be great. But two, three minutes, that's just not doing anything for the children's education.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Manning.
I just want to respond to that real quick. Over a period of time, though, a couple of minutes makes a big difference. It's over a period of time. It's not on a particular day, but it's over a period of time. But anyway, that, that wasn't what I wanted to say. What I want to talk about is there was a time when teachers could document their after-hours work and have that time built in to give them a flex day. Remember that? We did that.
Do you still do that?
Okay. So what I want to know is, because I taught elementary, so I know how important it is to have two dedicated days for some teachers. However, some teachers do conferences after school, that of that week, leading up to it. Because they try to benefit the parents' work schedules, okay? So I'm saying that if a teacher has, especially on the elementary level. Now, high school, that they may not have to have two days of conferences. But, but I'm just saying that if a teacher is able to meet the needs of all, all parents and students having, you know, whether they, whether they have conferences after school, before school, whatever, and they get it all done and they document that time, why couldn't we allow them to have November 8th as a flex day? Build that in. Do you see what I'm saying? Some teachers might want to not, not, might not want to do that so they could go ahead and be there all day on the 8th. Or, you know, but their time that they put in ahead of time could be documented. And then, and then after that, I think they should be allowed to have a flex day on the 16th of June as well. Because a lot of teachers put in a lot of hours. I can tell you, somebody who was there until six and seven o'clock at night. And, you know, I was fortunate because I had a husband who was retired and was able to do all the cooking. Okay, so, but, but I mean, if you're staying there and you're getting your work done and you've got your report cards done, and you've had conferences with all your parents, why not take that in consideration and allow teachers to have that flex time? And utilize those days of November 8th as a flex day and June 16th as a flex day? If they have everything done, their room's all clean and ready to go, all their grades are in, why not? If they've done that before or after-school hours, why not give them credit for that? And treat them as the professionals that they are. So that's my suggestion, is to have some, give them that, give them that idea that you can work, you know, and have, if you have conferences after school, the week leading up to November 7th and 8th. Because you know, that, I mean, a lot of times, parents can't get there during the day. They have to work. So you stay there till four o'clock, whatever, five o'clock in middle school. Right, a lot of, they might even be able to do a parent conference through Zoom, you know. But give them that flexibility to have the eight, November 8th as a flex day and June 16th as a flex day. That's my suggestion. And I do like this calendar. I think it's a good start. And I was concerned because I heard from several secondary teachers, especially about the fact that we went to a four by four, semi-four by four schedule. And a lot of them said that they needed a closeout day and they needed a, you know, get ready for the next semester day. However, by ending it on a Friday and having that Monday as a workday, as a staff day, again, we're asking them to do things before and after school, but that would give them the weekend to also be prepared for the following. I mean, I, I know it's, people would say, yeah, we were asking them to give up their weekend. Well, they're going to do it anyway. And then we, again, they could build up time for a flex day. So that's my suggestion. I just think that that should be something that we can consider, Dr. Spence.
All right, Mrs. Manning.
Well, thank you for all the hard work. I know this is a challenge. It's like putting a puzzle together. So thank you to everybody that worked on this. So while I personally, I personally like option one. I see the benefits of the AP testing. That's an issue. You know, I would like us to get more aligned with that. Colleges go back earlier. We would be a little bit more aligned with that. But I share Ms. Hughes' concerns around people who already have vacation plans. I mean, we, our family, we book it a year in advance. We book, you know, a week. So and there are a lot of people who book that last week to cut, to combine with the holiday weekend. So I'm very concerned about people who've already spent money that they can't get back. That's huge, huge issue for me. So while I, I would absolutely support this in a future year, I don't know if I can support it this year. My second concern is our Hotel Motel Association. This is a, this is a huge topic for them. It's very important for them. I know that they have kind of in the past been a little bit more open to this taking place. But they're also looking at hiring people. They probably already have that in plan. You know, I don't know where they are with that, with their summer hires. Have we had that conversation with the Hotel Motel Association?
That conversation has occurred. Natalie Allen from Community Relations did so. And I cannot share that information because I don't have it. I regret that I did not come prepared with it.
Dr. Spence, do you know what their response was?
No, I didn't have that conversation. That was part of the calendar work group.
Okay, because I, I think that's very, 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 very important for us to have before making a decision on this.
I mean, I know we had it last time we were talking about this and they were generally, they were not in favor of a pre-Labor Day start time.
No.
Understanding that, but they also understood that the vast majority of school districts in the state are now going to that. And that's sort of changing the nature of who's taking vacation.
No, and I understand that. And that's why I think it might be more palatable if we don't do it in February for, you know, this, this next school year. So that's my, my input. I just, I would like to hear what they have to say about this. But, but the family, the vacations that are already planned, I just, I don't know if I can get past that.
Okay, Mrs. Williamson.
Um, yeah, thank you, Dr. Saltner. Yeah, I too have, have concerns about starting that in September. Because basically, we've got a toss-up. We've got 52% and 48%. So basically, it, it's not leaning heavily either way. But if we wait a year, we've got potentially up to 65% of people that are going to be on board. So that's huge for me. I, I totally agree that many people do vacations, the Labor Day weekend, that week before. We will not be here that whole week. I'll be in Texas. So I just think, and with, with the whole conversation to the Hotel Association, to give them more time, because if, if we do this, then that will give them more time to adjust to it as well. So I like this calendar, but I would prefer to wait till a year from September, a year from September. Also, the only change that, that I would like for us to look at is the November. On option one, yeah. So November, right before Thanksgiving, we have a half a day, correct, on the 23rd?
That is correct.
I would like to see if people would rather flip that with December 21st and have a full day for November 23rd. Because if you're traveling for Thanksgiving Day, you can travel for that. And then a half day for the 21st of December because we are, we're going to have 13 days for, for winter break. So I would like to flip those two half-days.
So the only thing I'm just going to point out, yeah, that's easy enough to do, not a problem. If the board isn't going to go with a pre-Labor Day start, it doesn't matter what option one looks like. Because the calendar will change the following year.
Oh, that's right. That's true. Next year, that day.
So none of this will look the same.
You're right. You're very right.
So.
But if it, if it does end up where we do a half a day, let's go half a day before winter break.
Right, no, I understand the point. And so, yeah, no, no, no. And I, I mean, I wasn't saying that to be argumentative. I was just kind of saving people some time. We don't need to parse it apart if, if the board isn't going to really ultimately end up with that calendar. Because the dates of the year are going to shift.
Right, you're exactly right. Yeah. So again, I like this calendar, except for I do think we need to give it. Well, well, let me ask you this. Do you have data? Never mind. That's just, we'll do it.
You don't want me to get through all those numbers again?
Yeah, I'll email you this question. I know you don't have it. So I, I just think it would be better for us to wait, to get more people on board and get people to be able to plan their vacation around the start, the new start of school, which is a huge change. And then get our hotel folks time to adjust as well.
Mrs. Franklin. Well, not pleading this, but I kind of mirror all those things. And I actually think that the least preferred calendar question is kind of like, which of these does not apply? You know, it's kind of hard to, it's harder to say, which one of these does not apply as opposed to which one do you prefer? So I think that that might have led to some of that confusion. But, you know, if I'm just doing a rough estimate based on estimated percentages, because of course, these are just like, on our little sheet here, it looks, you know, about 22% or about 24%. But for the most preferred calendar, option one is 130 total. And option four was, is 174, if I'm just looking at the graphs individually. So it does seem like option four, for this year, does seem to be the one with the largest amount of votes. If you would have asked them for the most preferred portion of the calendar. So I have to agree that, I, I can tell you just scheduling vacations myself. You know, you do have to schedule out really far, especially if you have like time shares or different things like that, that you have kind of blocks and stuff. So my concern also, just from a personal perspective on this, is that we, we, most families, again, in those type of situations where they had to choose a week or do this, just because of the lack of availability, I bet they probably have those weeks already booked. So what accommodations do we make then for those people that have those situations where they, not necessarily by choice, but maybe because they had to choose that week? Are we going to make for them that might have to miss school? And, and with that being said, you know, I, I kind of agree that communication and planning and preparation time is some of the biggest things that we get complaints about, is we didn't have enough time to plan and prepare and prep and do all this. So I do feel like that doing this type of option next, or for '22, or, I'm sorry, '23, '24 would make the most sense just in terms of communication, prep time, allowing people to do proper planning for their, their calendar. And I think that just giving them that heads up, we are planning on going to a pre-Labor Day in '23, '24. Please make your plans accordingly based on that knowledge. I think that is just the most respectful way to go about doing this. Although I have to say, Dr., I appreciate all the time that went into this and your recommendation. On a side note, though, I do agree, and me, I, I'm just asking kind of from a naive state here. But I think that we have to start getting creative in terms of ways that we can provide, you know, better options for, for teacher morale and workdays and stuff like that. How much flexibility do we have in terms of that flex time for teachers? And being able to allow them to have a little bit of more flexibility and in ways that they're, they're using their, their flex time and their workdays and, and things like that? How much flexibility is there in that?
The board has a fair amount of flexibility. The teachers operate under a 200-day contract.
Okay.
And currently, they are, they are, so, because this might be good information. Maybe people have forgotten this. Teachers on a 200-day contract. They are currently scheduled between instructional and staff days at 193 days. So there are seven days of contract time built in for the work that they do that's not recognized. So, there are seven days of contract time built in for the work that they do that's not recognized within the scheduled calendar.
Okay.
And that's been the case as long as I've been here. So, and that was the recognition of, we're not going to schedule you out to the full 200 days. Because we know you work on, you know, beyond the school day, because you have to grade papers and things like that, right?
Sure.
And so, if the Board says, well, we think it should be 192 assigned days and 100, and then eight unassigned days, then we can flex another day. That's kind of how that works. So, it, it's really sort of up to you. We're, we're operating within the, you know, again, it's sort of one of those, I wouldn't call this, this is particularly a status quo recommendation. But I mean, it's one of those, we're operating within the parameters that we're used to. If the Board wants to create different parameters, we just need that direction.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, what are the requirements from the state in terms of how much flexibility we can?
Our state requirements are driven by, by instructional hours and instructional days for students. And then we have a contract that's set with staff. And then most of the requirements around the contract for staff are more about planning time that's required during the week and number of classes and number of students they can teach. So, there isn't necessarily, you know, I mean, the same number of, of days they have to work inside that contract.
Okay. Well, I think, I, I know that that's not calendar planning, and that's maybe a different topic or a different time to discuss that. But I do agree that, I think that that is a great creative way for us to provide more morale, more of a morale boost, more flexibility, more, you know, of a opportunity for them to get credited for that time that we know that they're utilizing pre and post-hours. So, so, yeah, I, I would like to maybe table that discussion for another time, but definitely have that in the future about what ways we can be more flexible and provide more accommodations there. So, thank you.
Okay, me. So, I will say first, and I've, you know, I'm digesting all the, my colleagues' commentary. What I like about, when I look at the, the two pre-Labor Days, I saw this as a kind of a projection or a projection that the, the beauty of option one is we, we, we introduce the pre-Labor Day concept gently with a few days pre-Labor Day. With the ultimate goal, perhaps, and probably ideally, because it does seem to accomplish a lot of the other asks of, of going to, and, you know, and, and just then possibly considering an even earlier start the following year where we could get the two weeks at Christmas. And we wouldn't have to be here haggling about how to get the second day for the high school teachers. So, let me first finish those comments before I get to a procedural question. I, I do feel, and I know, you know, I reached out to Dr. Saltner. And I was very pleased to see these two days for the elementary teachers, although that would be lost with the, one of the, with the post-Labor Day. But I do, there seems, there was really very strong rationale presented. And the added piece for me is that Chesapeake, which has had four-by-four forever, has for at least 10 years. That's, that's how many years they, they could commit to me, have had those two days for the, the high school teachers and in between the two semesters. That they're totally convinced of the need for it, and it seems as strong a case as, as the conferences for the elementary teachers. Given that we have to approve something in two weeks, I, I think it's a fair ask, which of the two post-Labor Days, because we know that with the two pre-Labor Days, it seems the group and, and certainly the, the calendar work group, but also my colleagues, prefer one over two for, if, if you were just choosing between these two, which of these other two op, which, which of the post-Labor Day options? Would, is, does the calendar work group, did you already share which of these two is the administrative recommendation?
We didn't have one for post.
For post, option one or option two, the pre-Labor Day start?
You can see what was most preferred in the survey right there, right? So, but we didn't have a recommendation for you for post-Labor Day. We have a recommendation for you for option one. With the understanding, this is the Board's decision to make, and this is the reason we have these discussions.
That was my question. So, I guess colleagues consider that answer. And is there anybody else who wants to say more? And Mrs. Holt, okay, we haven't heard from you yet.
All right, thank you. I prefer option one calendar. And I'm sitting here going back on last year, because so many people talked about the pre-Labor Day. We've been trying to have this pre-Labor Day start for many, many years now. And I recall last year, the very same reason we didn't, because people complained that we already had our vacations. We, we're going on a cruise or something. So, they were forewarned. And that was one of the reasons why we didn't start it. So, how many years are we going to put it off because of that? I, I think people have gotten proper warning. And those that are concerned about it, we need to start pre-Labor Day, and I will be favoring option one.
Mrs. Ruggs.
I like what Mrs. Anderson said. I, I would like to look at that, you know, the flexibility. So, I'd like to have that as another conversation as well for our teachers, because we know how much time they put in before and after their contact hours. And I know you've done that in the past too, Dr. Spence, so I really would like to speak with that. But I also want to say that I agree with Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Manning, Mrs. Hughes, Mrs. Franklin. I do know we talked about it last year, but I also know, we, we just talked about it. We didn't say, hey, we're going to do it. So, yes, we've been wanting to do it for the last couple of years. But I think that the two things that they mentioned, and, and that was the thing that I was concerned about, is people do have their vacations planned. And I would like to know what, what our association for, you know, the Hospitality Association down at the beach is, is thinking and giving them that opportunity too. And I do know we need to move forward with it. But I would like to see us possibly do, go ahead, and I think it's four, isn't it four that, that there, that would be the calendar that, and we would go with four? And the, this fall, and then in 23, 24, do option one, because I do like it. I think it's good. I would love to look at somehow finding some time to get those two days in there.
Can I tee up maybe a thought? Because I'm worried if we don't, because we always do the calendar around this time. In fact, many school divisions don't have their calendar yet. So, if at some point we don't rip the Band-Aid off of a pre-Labor Day start, it isn't going to happen, because we're going to have the same conversation every year. So, I'm wondering if we might ask the work group to go back and do a two-year calendar with the second year reflecting option one. It, you know, it'll be different days, but in that same vein, where you would then vote and you would signal, okay, so this year, we're going to honor that and do the post-Labor Day version, and then have a second year already in there and already voted on that's pre-Labor Day. So, people don't, they've got a year and a half to plan for it. Would that, would that work for, for the Board, for us to take this back at this point and work on that and address some of the other comments that we've heard?
Mrs. Anderson, we have three people in the queue.
It will make sense if, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Manning.
So, when I first went in the queue, I was going to suggest that we not change our start time for this year and let people know it's going to start earlier next year, period. The two-year calendar solves that problem. I absolutely think we should do that. I think that solves everything. It lets people know ahead of time that that's what we're going to do. Because I do prefer the earlier start. I just do think that we need to give people that time, because they've already made summer plans. And it's not just vacations. Some people have accepted jobs or planned weddings and things like that. And you could potentially be unenrolled from a program if you're not there the first week of school. And I wouldn't want to see any of our students penalized. So, the two-year calendar idea, I, I think that's a perfect solution.
As a matter of record, a student cannot be counted absent until they are present.
Oh, okay.
So, if a family was on vacation, their first day would be the day that they return.
I just recall when we had, we had to change our calendar because of Rosh Hashanah. There were parents who expressed concerns that their children could be unenrolled. So, I didn't want to have that conversation again about this.
Well, there is a point in the year when they do unenroll, so, but it's not.
All right, we have Mrs. Hughes and then Mrs. Manning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I agree. I mean, I think that several years ago, the reason we went to doing two-year calendars was so that people could plan in advance. So, I'm not sure how we got away from doing the two-year calendar. I think it was because of COVID and all of that. So, I don't think it's anything new that we're going back to a two-year calendar. But I think this could resolve the problem. I, I would go with what Ms. Riggs suggested with option four this year. And then, you know, it, something similar to option one the following year and do a two-year calendar.
Okay, Mrs. Franklin and then Mrs. Anderson.
Well, and you just kind of stole my thunder, because I was going to just say that that's a great idea. So, um, but I, I just want to just make a comment on the, we gave it, you know, we were talking about this last year and blah, blah, blah. But I just want to tell you, just from a planning perspective, just to give some insight, ton of people are now planning their vacations, that they didn't have that, you know, during last year, when more people were not planning and doing vacations. So, that is why this year in particular makes it a little bit more difficult to plan, just because more people are getting out there and planning their vacations. So, I just wanted to make that comment, just to make sure that we acknowledge the fact that, yes, we did talk about this last year. I, I understand that. But last year, there were much, many fewer people that were actually taking vacations. And this year, there are more. So, thank you.
And Mrs. Anderson.
So, if it looks like we're headed to option four for this coming year, and option, some, some, something similar to option one for the following year, then I would suggest strongly that we certainly need to, need to go with the plan that I suggested about having, giving teachers flex time. And have it, put it up front. Let them know up front that we're, we're going to allow flex time between certain dates. You can do this, and it's going to work for this particular staff day. And, and then you can start working again for the next staff day. But it's especially important for calendar four, option four. And that's because, look at, look at how late the teachers have, they have a staff day on the 20th and a flex day on the 21st. I think both of those days should be a flex day, where they, if they've worked ahead of time and gotten all their stuff done, those should be flex days that they could use built-up time for.
What month are you in, Mrs. Anderson?
June. June of 2023.
Understood.
Because that's really late. The students get out on the 16th. If all their work is done and they've had, they've done everything, all their grades are in, why can't they use their flex time to not have to show up on those two days of the 20th and the 21st? Just, I think that's very important for teachers to be able to do. And it, and as Jennifer pointed out, you know, it's another one of those little things that I talked about. Remember, a couple of weeks ago, I talked about how important it was for this one particular teacher who had gotten to 25 years. And because of that, he had earned an extra Personal Reasons Day, and he was so excited about that. That's one of those little things. It's a little thing that we can do for our teachers, to show them the respect that they deserve.
And I know that our principals do that frequently with staff. It's not uncommon for them to do so. And I know that we also have critics, taxpayers, who don't want to see us flex days and feel that individuals should work. And there's two sides that I would say we need to weigh.
Yeah, but what they don't see is that there's an awful lot that the teachers do above and beyond. They come early, they stay late, and they're getting no credit for that whatsoever. So, this is one of those little things where we can actually just give them the credit that they deserve.
Okay, so we will wrap this up. But if I could reiterate, and I, at the risk of speaking on behalf of Mrs. Riggs as well, that when you come back next, in two weeks, and before that, we'll see it, I'm sure, with the second year option, that at least the effort is made to try to find a way for those two days between the two semesters.
Got it. We've got, we've got the feedback. I think we need to bring you something. And we, as you said, we'll, we'll try to get it to you well in advance, because we would still like to try to get you to take action on this in two weeks, based on the discussion tonight. Because truly, we've got to get a calendar out to our families. But understanding, we think what we heard is option four. We know what you're looking for also within that. And then option one as the second year of the calendar, with understanding it's going to be different days. And so, there'll be some adjustments to that, okay?
Will do.
Thank you, Dr. Salt. So, how many rounds was that for you? Not too many scores?
None, none. That's the point of this conversation, so we know what direction to go.
We tried to be gentle.
You are indeed. Thank you.
Okay, so, our, our next information item, and Dr. Smith is patiently waiting there. So, we've middle school scheduling. We, we had an initial workshops discussion. And, and now this is our information session on this topic. So, welcome.
And hopefully, you'll be gentle with me as well. Good evening, Chairman Moonrye, Vice Chair Malinick, Dr. Spence, and members of the school board. The intent of my presentation is to review the middle school master schedule model that I shared with you on January 25th during our workshop. And I would like to seek additional input and guidance on direction you would like to take with this schedule option. At the conclusion of my presentation, I will answer your questions. And I will look for your direction with this schedule to proceed to an action item for our next school board meeting or abandon and stay with our current schedule. Recall from our last workshop, an alternate middle school schedule model was presented in response to an unmet challenge of staffing unfilled vacancies. On January 25th, I shared that we started the school year with 113 unfilled teaching positions. And despite staffing throughout the school year, today we have, excuse me, today we have 103 unfilled teaching positions. I also mentioned during our meeting, the hard work of our human resources department has put forth in recording, recruiting efforts. One human resource initiative is offering early commitment contracts for the 22, 23 school, school year. Although human resources received 37 early commitment contracts for the middle school to date, only one person has accepted a position. I also shared with the Board that our current middle school schedule has proven highly effective for us. And had we no staffing shortage, I would not bring this proposal forward. You may have seen similar proposals over the years during lean budget times. But let me be clear, the proposal I shared with you at workshop and will revisit today is driven by our inability to fill vacancies, not a budget shortfall. Perhaps you read the Associated Press article, which appeared in the Virginia Pilot this Sunday, titled "Teacher Pipeline, Teacher Pipeline Slows to a Trickle," wherein an author details the challenges the districts across the United States are faced with. One superintendent of a school division near Pittsburgh, a recruiting hotbed for teachers, said this, "It's like an impending doom when you look out a few years at what this might turn into." Let me review the process used to date. Initial work began with a team of principals, master schedulers, and teacher representatives who grappled with creating options to maximize the capacity of our current staff. At our meeting, the team created multiple options and concluded that the model presented to you at workshop and the model we will revisit today best meets the parameters of maximizing staffing, providing 270 minutes of planning weekly, and providing academic support opportunities to meet the needs of our students. Following the selection of this model, it was presented to middle school principals, their assistant principals who oversee master schedules, senior staff, and of course, during our school board workshop. Last week, principals shared this model through their instructional leadership teams or with their entire staff. Principal engage, principals engaged in conversations with their staff and encouraged them to submit questions and attend one or two webinar sessions that were offered February 3rd. One session was offered at 8:00 a.m. and another session was offered at 5:00 p.m. Approximately 150 staff attended this webinar. Let's return to the schedule that was presented to you and our schools. To recap, the model presented is much like a junior high school model, and that all core teachers would teach five- and that all core teachers would teach five fifty-minute classes daily in contrast to the four classes they currently teach. The only deviation from the five-class schedule occurs at the eighth grade level where elective classes would be on a one hundred and fifteen-minute A-B block schedule. The rationale for this was to allow four sections of lunch at eighth grade level to ensure we do not exceed cafeteria, cafeteria capacity. For example, with each sixth and seventh grade lunch bell, a quarter of our eighth grade students would also have lunch at the same time. Adding a fifth core class to the schedule maximizes staffing within the confines of the same teacher contractual day, provides two hundred and seventy, seventy-five minutes of weekly planning for core and elective teachers, maintains academic support opportunities to address student needs, and aligns the middle school schedule across the division to maximize our distance learning program. The model also provides, in most instances, common planning time for collaboration except where a teacher is teaching a singular subject off-grade level. With the off-grade level class, there would be no common planning time. Here is a focused view of a teacher's schedule at each grade level. Each will teach four classes on grade level and will teach one class off-grade level. You will also see that the teacher will have a daily fifty-five minute planning bell for a total of two hundred and seventy minutes per week, and each will have a thirty-minute lunch. Here is what an elective teacher's schedule will look like. Know that elective teachers have always taught five classes, one more than their core teachers who, who have always taught four. Nothing has changed with the elective schedule with the exception where an A-B schedule is used at the eighth grade level. The teacher will have a thirty-minute lunch and a fifty-five minute daily planning bell, which is the equivalent of the proposed schedule for core teachers. It's important to note that nothing changes with the student's schedule in terms of the number of core and elective classes they will take. Only core teachers will have an additional class added, and that is where we maximize our staffing resources. The adoption of this new schedule maximized the capacity of our staff. Teachers who do not prefer this model will have the opportunity to transfer to elementary or high school based on their certifications. Although planning minutes will be reduced due to the addition of a fifth class, this plan meets the two hundred and fifty minutes of weekly planning requirement under Regulation four dash sixty point one. As well, this plan does provide common planning time except for when a teacher teaches a fifth bell off-grade level. Of note, while we're asking middle school core teachers to teach a fifth class, their elective counterparts have always taught a fifth class. There are several options. There are several options for your consideration, and I want to need your feedback on how to proceed. I also recognize the difficulties of the position or decision that you might have to make. Should this decision be accepted, the proposed schedule, I am confident we will eliminate unfilled instructional vacancies, maintain our academic support classes, provide common planning time for classes that are on grade level. Again, this schedule will require core teachers to teach a fifth class on, off-grade level and will reduce planning time from four hundred minutes a week to two hundred and seventy-five minutes a week, which meets the two hundred and fifty-minute weekly planning required in Regulation four dash sixty point one. The second option is to stay with our current schedule. Again, this is the preferred schedule that middle school finds to be highly effective. However, this means we may continue to struggle staffing unfilled vacancies. It may call for us to consider raising class size to absorb some of these vacancies. For a point of reference, our current core class sizes range from twenty-eight to thirty students, with some advanced classes reaching thirty to thirty-two students. On rare occasions, we do see advanced classes that are thirty-three to thirty-five students. Based on the standard of quality, core classes at the middle school level can have an average capacity of thirty-five and will require the board's tolerance to accept an increase in class size. We may also need to continue to staff unfilled vacancies with long-term substitute teachers who may or may not have the endorsement to teach the content area. Currently, we have forty-six long-term substitute teachers, twenty at the elementary school level, and twenty-six at the secondary level. Another option may be to revisit the propos- this proposal in the year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four to reassess the degree of challenge with our staffing shortage. We can continue to work with the Department of Teaching and Learning and the Department of Technology on ways to leverage technology where needed to cover unfilled vacancies. I will conclude by looking for your direction on how we should proceed and prepare for the twenty-two, twenty-three middle school schedule. If the decision is to move forward with this proposal, I will come back to the board. It will come back to the board as an action item for the February twenty-second school board meeting. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay, we will start with Mrs. Riggs and then Mrs. Weems.
Okay. I have several questions. Um, you're looking at options, some options moving forward. Let's look at the raising the class size. How many, how, I know we've talked about we'd never raise the class size, but we never, you can never say never. There's times that things happen. So if we're looking at raising the class size, how, by how many possibly would we have to raise the class size if we're looking at it right now? And thinking that we're gonna be around the same situation we're in.
So if we're looking at raising class size, it's, right now, we're at twenty-one point two five one. Um, if we add two students to a class, uh, that can assist with our unfilled vacancies. I don't know what that exact ratio would be at this time, uh, but I know that that would, that would help with reducing unfilled vacancies.
Okay, now would that be across the, the whole?
So that's not how that works. As you know, we've, when we have these class size conversations, it doesn't mean every class gets an additional two people. It alters our FTEs. And so schools would get fewer FTEs and then they have to build their schedule around their FTEs. And so some classes will go up significantly in class size, some might not go up depending on student registration for those classes. Where you'll see more commonly, a more balanced class size raise is at the elementary level.
Okay, so, all right, so there are more balance there. Okay, um, I, I have a concern with this proposition, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, first of all, you know, I would go into a very long story. I think I've shared it with several of you. I, middle school is where it's at. This is where we are giving the support to our students. And if you've never taught middle school, you just don't know how hard that is. It's very difficult and it takes special people to do it. And they wanna do it. They want to do it most of the time. I left kindergarten after nineteen years and went to it for nineteen more years, to sixth grade. But we need this middle school concept. I do not like the idea. And it is, it would be turning more towards the junior high. We're not giving the support, the social emotional support that these kids need. And most of the time, this age group needs a lot more than all the other age groups. Because it's a difficult time and difficult age. So a lot of that would be moving away. Teaching, um, being able to have the time to plan and work with your grade level when you're teaching another grade level. When are you gonna be able to, to work with that other grade level? If you're, you're teaching two different grade levels because you've got four classes in, in like sixth grade and then one in seventh or eighth, when you could get to, who, who are you gonna meet with? And when are you gonna get to meet with them? And if you've never taught it, which oftentimes that'll, that would happen. If you've never taught that other grade level, you're gonna really need that time. But you also need that time to work with your, your own grade level. When are you gonna be able to go out for conferences or IEP meetings or it's gonna be your instructional all the time or it's gonna be your planning time? So then you're taking it away again. I know people talk about how much planning time middle school teachers have. That's a joke. That planning time is, is not what you see there. They are, they are spending a lot of that time in meetings and, uh, IEP meetings and professional development, professional learning, all of that, conferences. We have conferences, not just two days during the year. And I say we, because I consider myself a middle school teacher always, but they have, they have conferences almost every day of the week. I mean, they, they, they talk to, they have, uh, parents come in all the time during their planning time. It's not just those two days in November. So, and it's important to have conferences with middle school teachers or middle, middle school, uh, parents. I am totally, um, you're, you're, you're giving, these teachers are still having the same amount of students as the, your high school, but yet they're not gonna be getting the, their planning time and time they need for their meetings, their planning, their, they're going into conferences, all of that. So I, I just think that this is, we're putting, we're trying to fix this problem, and I know it is, and putting it on one group of teachers to fix the whole division. And that, I, I just think it's wrong. Especially now with things, the way things are going. I'd rather see, and I, I truly believe if we did a poll and we asked the principals in middle school and the teachers in middle school, what they would rather have between the two. Would they rather have a little bit larger class size, larger class size? Or would they rather keep this schedule? Hundred percent, they would keep this schedule that they have now.
So the only thing I'd add to that last thought is that the class size, raising the class sizes would not be limited to middle school. This staff size adjustment that we're talking about would spread out across.
Yeah, and I wanted, I, I was trying to ask you that earlier, so.
So it wouldn't be limited to just middle school. You'd, you'd see likely class size adjustments.
Right.
Depending again on how many vacancies. I mean, I think the issue for all of us is I don't think we can go through another school year with a hundred vacancies. The gaps we have been filling in going through the school year with a hundred vacancies have not been, I mean, it's very difficult. You just heard we had, we have forty-six long-term substitutes. That means there's sixty on a day-to-day basis that don't have even a long-term substitute in that instructional classroom. That's not good. And so we, we, I don't think we can do that again. And so, you know, obviously, our HR team's doing everything it can to hire. Uh, you, you know, we, we, you heard earlier, I think, that we've been able to continue to hire and we've made some inroads in getting some more teachers onboard. And that's why we have the option there of revisiting the proposal next year to reassess where we are in the hiring process. Are we seeing the same challenges? Or are, or has it gotten better? Um, if it hasn't gotten better, we're gonna have to take some action and it's likely gonna include, if we don't, if we haven't taken this action, it's likely gonna include class size increases balancing out so that kids aren't sitting without teachers.
I'd rather, I'd rather sit on it and watch it and see, talk about next year. But that's, that's just mine. But there's just so many things that I think, I don't wanna put this on the backs of those teachers. I just don't.
And Mrs. Weems and then Mrs. Manning.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Smith, you were given a, a task that was almost, I would say, impossible to come up with something. Um, and so I really, um, respect the difficulty of this. I think we went through this, what, five or six years ago? Um, and Trenice and I, um, often spoke against the change because of our love for the middle school concept. And this time around, of course, we all have our teachers that we go to and certain teachers that call us. And so, of course, in the last week, I've talked to many teachers and I've talked with teachers that are very like-minded with me on almost every subject. And I've talked to teachers that pretty much disagree with me on every subject. And Ms. Linda, you'll be glad to know that I've talked to many teachers in, in, in your organization in the last week. And I love that the teachers that I talked with said, Carolyn, this is not what's best for the students. We've gotten a lot of emails, you know, from teachers saying, this is just too, too overwhelming for teachers, you know, and I get that. But so many of the ones that I talked to said, I really honestly believe, of course, I'll do it if I have to. Um, I'd rather have a larger class size, especially if you laser focus the, the type of class and, and student, you know, population there. Um, but it's not what's best for these students in sixth and seventh and eighth grade who are going through such change and going from a, a dependency of their wonderful elementary bubble to this middle school and everything, all the other challenges of this age group and, and all that. So, so I really do think that this is not what's best for students. And so I really can't support it now. Um, also, several, well, almost the majority of the teachers that I talked with said, you're gonna try to fix the problem of a staffing shortage. And Carolyn, I really think this is gonna make it worse. Because like me, I can retire now. I wanted to, to teach three or four more years. I'm quoting somebody. But if this is passed, I'll probably go ahead and check on out. And so many of my friends have said the same thing. You know, I, I can retire, but I really love it. I wanna stay a few more years. But this is just too much to try to keep, teach that fifth class on, on a level that I'm not an expert at and, and everything else that comes with it. So, um, I can pretty much solidly say that, that I cannot support this. And so I would, I would say that that, that next week when we vote, I would hope that, um, we would sit on it and reassess in a year. But I totally understand what you were trying to do and I appreciate that. But, um, I'm gonna err on the side of what I think is best for students, and I don't think this is it.
Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Malinick.
So I share a lot of Ms. Weems' thoughts on this, and I've heard from a lot of teachers and spoken to a lot of teachers as well. And while I know that we have an issue that we have to address, um, I need to be convinced that we have, um, looked at every other possibility before I'm willing to put more work on our teachers. Um, one of the things that I asked the teachers, you know, okay, well, give me some solutions. Don't just tell me you don't like this. Give me, do, what ideas do you have? And one of the common themes was, we have licensed teachers who are not in the classroom right now. And so I did send an email asking to get more feedback on that. Okay, well, how many is that? You know, is that, is that five? Is that fifty? I mean, would that even be, make an impact on our problem? Um, I haven't gotten, um, I, I think Dr. Robertson was looking into that. Um, I got an initial response, but I haven't gotten, um, an answer back on that. So if I could get some information on how many licensed teachers that we have in central administration who are not filling the role of a classroom teacher, um, and how, and what type of an impact would that have, um, on our teacher shortage problem? Um, another idea I'll throw out there, because if you're gonna complain about it, do something about it. If I'm not gonna support it, I feel like I need to try to come up with alternatives. And I don't even know if this is even a possibility, but, um, is there a scenario where there could be a type of hybrid option where you do offer, maybe there are some teachers out there who would be willing to take on more of a workload with an extra stipend? Um, and we could, you know, maybe add a class or two here and there to, to teachers, maybe do a, a type of hybrid option that could help us.
So, uh, the answer to that question is we currently do that?
Okay. Can we do that more?
Crystal. Uh, we, we, we do have a lot of middle schools that take advantage of, uh, extra class allowances. Um, sometimes it affords students three electives. You know, you get an eighth grade student who is a foreign language, who is banned and who wants to have it. So we have a zero valve that allows that. And then where we reach a capacity, uh, where a class gets too high, sometimes a principal will reach out and say, I'm requesting an extra class allowance for a teacher to teach off-grade level. So we do currently do that.
Okay, yeah. So I guess maybe my suggestion would be, let's push that to see if we can get more, um, to, to help with that. I don't know.
If I can just take, Ms. Manning, I'm not aware of, if you could resend me that request, because that was new to me. So let, let me just share some of the things we've done. Um, we are short seven math teachers at high school. It might even be more. So Mr. Delaney, working with T and L, uh, identified a group of teachers at the high school level who had five classes instead of six. Their sixth class was a academic support class. And they went to those teachers and said, we need you to teach a sixth class. But guess what? None of your kids are going to be in your school. Because your kids are going to be in the other high schools. Why? Because the other high schools don't have teachers. So we have a number of teachers. I subbed for a teacher on Friday at Salem who has a class on A-days that she pipes in to four other high schools. And in those four other high schools, there's a teacher assistant or someone sitting in that class while this teacher pumps in the lesson, use technology as a resource, much like you might have at, at, at the college level. So we're doing that. We have, Dossel and Detol and HR have been working. They have a list of every vacancy that we have right now and how we're filling it. We have a large number of long-term subs sitting in class, including middle school. We got a math class and IB program at Plaza. It's had a long-term sub all year. How is that a good solution? It's a stopgap. It's what we're doing. Dr. Rogers has gone with HR and laid out all the certifications of every person he has working for him. And he's identified staff that potentially could be shifted back to a school as early as next week if we don't have another solution. So this is a terrible problem that we have right now. This was a potential solution. It's not a palatable solution. One of you I spoke to on the phone said, do you really think people are going to be excited about working more and having less planning? No, they're not. And so we, there's going to be the need to make a hard decision sooner rather than later. And it's not a solution that, that we are excited about. It's just going to be necessary. Raising class sizes, as Dr. Spence mentioned, um, it'll be a K-12. And it's, you know, elementary, couple teacher, couple kids per classroom. At the middle school level, depending on the makeup of the schedule, it could be one or two, or it could be five. At the high school level, again, depending on the schedule, it could be one or two, or it could be five. We already know at the high school level, we have a number of teachers that are right at 150 or a little over 150, and we pay them a little bit extra for that. This is going to happen. Because we've seen for years, the pipeline has dried up. And so we are doing everything we possibly can, including leveraging technology, to address this particular challenge. And I understand middle school teachers aren't excited about this. And we're not setting Dr. Smith up, although it is initiation. We're not hazing, not really. But, uh, so I appreciate all that. But if, at some point in time, unless something changes on the national landscape or the state landscape, uh, with, with more teachers coming into the pipeline, we're just going to have to make some really unpalatable decisions. But until that time, we are freezing positions. You guys have, uh, have approved promotions. They're still sitting in the same position they were, they were sitting in when they were promoted because we haven't found a vacancy. So there are positions that should be filled that are unfilled right now because those people are still in the classroom. Anyway, I just felt like, yeah, it's a difficult problem for us, for us. And we will be working through it, but, uh, we're, we're, we're exhausting every solution, uh, that we can. So, thanks.
So Dr. Robertson, um, that, that was an important comment. So let's just go back in time. Many of us survived junior high school. I went to Brandon Junior High School, um, and we survived, although I'm not in favor of this switch. Um, it's, it's the wrong time. There's too much going on in the world right now, in, in the world of teachers, if you will, that, um, I mean, I mean, to quote Kathleen Slindy, how much more are we going to add? How many more teachers have to come before us? I mean, we had two and a half hours of teachers tonight. And we still have some to speak. Um, I tallied marked the, uh, middle school. Um, you know, we have a middle school teacher that stayed tonight to listen to this discussion. It's twenty after ten. But I also think that we need to be a little more careful in recognizing the people that do all of this work too. And, and not making their positions seem so disposable. This is, this is, even at this level, I don't envy any of you. This is no club down here, Monday through Sunday, seven days a week. Um, and so, um, I applaud you. I applaud the amount of time and effort that you put into this. Um, especially, you know, sadly, I guess it could have gone, you know, to, to what's next on your list. And so thank you for all of that. Um, you know, we really listen to the community and we listen to the teachers and, and I just, it's just the wrong time. They just can't, they can't do it. And we're, again, you, you guys have said this too. We're all going to have to come together again and try to find a way to make this work. And this board also, um, needs to find a way to start lifting their teachers. And I think we heard some of that tonight too with the calendar talk. And so.
And the budget. Good, Crystal.
And the budget. You're a rock star. So, um, and to that, I will yield to Dr. Spence, and then it's Ms. Franklin.
Uh, well, no, that's okay.
Sure?
Yeah.
You had, he did, he was in the queue, so, okay.
Well, if people still want to talk about it, I was going to suggest we could move past this. I think there's a clear, uh, but carry on, I'm sorry.
Okay. It just depends bare-bones. I mean, because you did.
We still haven't heard from half of our members, so I think we need to allow everybody. Well, I, I, I also agree that this just perpetuates, um, the problem that we're going to have more shortages. Um, I, I, I don't have to, you know, prolong this because everybody agrees with that. I, my, my one question is, um, how can we potentially increase the way that we leverage technology? Is there any other additional way that we could potentially tap into? I mean, um, Mr. Din is so amazing. So is there, are there any other ways that we can leverage technology to provide additional solutions? And/or also look at creative options, um, to give incentive, uh, for teachers to continue with us? And, um, and, you know, in terms of, maybe we have to like, take a look. I mean, if, if, if it's really going to impact to the point where we would have to make an awful, um, decision that would really upset many teachers. Um, you know, maybe we do have to take a look and see if there's any other additional ways through budgeting or, um, you know, flexible scheduling, time off, but, you know, um, bonuses, whatever, that, that we can incentivize. Because I, I just know personally in the military, you know, and I know it's not the same. I've been told that many times. But, you know, there are, there are a lot of positions that are not palatable positions. Um, but we find ways to fill those positions because there's a need and it's necessary and we've got to do it. So I just feel like there is, there is a way to, to push through and find a path on this if we are determined to be a little bit creative in terms of making that happen, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
On Mrs. Hughes, then, Mrs. Felton.
I, I do understand that we're in a pickle here and that you're trying to find creative solutions. I just don't think this is it. And I'm not, I'm not sure how we took a segue into deciding that anybody's jobs were just disposable. I don't think anybody has said that.
Yes.
But, excuse me?
Oh, nothing, I was telling her I got you. Please go ahead, Mrs. Hughes. You didn't.
Okay.
She just asked me, I said, yes, I did, I got her. Mrs. Hughes, please.
So.
My gosh.
So no, I, nobody's saying anybody's jobs are disposable. However, at this juncture in time, clearly the priority is staffing the classrooms. And so there, there may need to be a shift where, you know, people are moved back into classrooms because that is where the need is right now. It doesn't mean the other jobs are not valuable, but this is where the need is right now because the number one priority is staffing the classrooms and teaching the children. This, adding these classes, like, this is, it's just not a sustainable business model. It, it will eventually completely implode. Teachers are going to leave. Students are not going to have teachers. We already have people that are talking about leaving. This is going to make it even worse. And so, I mean, it, it was a creative way to try to approach it. I just, I don't think it's going to work and I wouldn't be able to support it.
Okay, Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Robertson, that was a compelling, um, argument, really. I do appreciate all that you all have done and how you move forward with this as well. Um, I have not talked to many, 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 many teachers, as some have said, but I have talked to ten plus. And one of the ten that I've talked to were standing out in the cold, one of the coldest night of the week, talking about this situation. And just to reiterate what all of my colleagues have said, one of the, a couple of things that really, um, resonated with me when the teacher was talking. They said, you know, we actually moved from, um, junior high to middle high because of the transition that these students were making. And they said, we're the, we're the core center that keeps these students, uh, social and emotional, um, content together. And I say, in this day and time, they really, really need it, Ms. Felton. They really need that we are there as a core for them to support them. And we often talked about the mental health and the mental state of our students and what they've already gone through within the last, uh, two years. Um, you know, and, and I understand too. Understand that this situation of having no teachers did not start with the pandemic. We've been dealing with the lack of teaching. We've been having this conversation, how to get them back in, how to recruit them, how to retain them as well. But we're just in a situation where the pandemic really made that, wow, it hit it substantially. And our teachers are struggling with it as well. Um, the middle teachers, school teachers talk with such passion about what they do and how they want to continue to do. But the last thing they said to me, said, you know, when we can't do our profession well, we're the quality. We, we lose the quality of what we do and who we are. And one said, I would not accept that. She said, I will not take that. She said, before that happened to me, I would leave because I would no longer have the benefit of giving them a quality education. I know you all hear a lot of things too, and we hear, uh, uh, a lot of things from the teachers. But tonight, I just want to be the voice of those that have called and emailed me what they're saying. And they love what they do, Mr. Smith. They, they, they love teaching middle school and they want to be able to do that. Um, I know that, uh, GRTs and, uh, TAs, they're overburdened as well. I know you got them in a room as well. And then when we, when we exhaust those positions as well, then that's when we come to central office and pull those, uh, professions out and go back into the classroom. We are in a situation where we have this, the thing is keeping school open five days a week. That is the main thing that we are trying to do. But our teachers, and I'm hearing them, both male, female, whoever they're talking, coming out. They, it's, it's one, it's at that point where they just cannot pull this one off. And I'm just speaking for the board. They said, we are now trying to put a Band-Aid on a gaping wound that we know we have. It's a gaping wound that, that's there. Um, believe me when I say that I do understand all of what you all have put into this and how you, uh, gone through the process and, and how you made things possible. But this particular move that you're trying to do with the middle school teachers, I cannot support it on those grounds of, of what they're saying, being that, that core value for them, especially, uh, SELs that they need to get those students, and that transition, when those students are moving from elementary to middle school, that transition in period that they really actually need to get them to the next level. So this is something, it has given me, um, terrible heartburn. And, and it is one thing that I'm seeing that I, I can't really see supporting this particular proposal. Thank you.
Dr. Spence.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Well, first of all, Ms. Felton, we, we do not want you having heartburn. Um, so. I do, yeah. So, um, I mean, I would try to make this easy for the board. And also, um, before I do that, I want to say this. The, the team that had this conversation and decided to bring this forward with you all for some conversation about this, they're not a bunch of ogres who are looking to beat up and abuse teachers. So, because, you know, we, we hear that too. And, and that's not the case, right? So, um, we said out of the gates, we like this model. We know this is a good model. It's not the only model. You know, I've polled across my peer group and they are consistently shocked when they hear that our middle school teachers teach four classes plus an advisory block or a, or a academic support block. They're consistently shocked. It's an unusual model. We're fortunate. Our teachers are very fortunate to be able to teach in that model. And so I can understand why they don't want to not teach in that model because it's a good model for kids. We all agree. And, and so the, the notion of, you know, we're, we're, we're just going to abuse our teachers and create this, this, you know, uh, significant problem. I mean, it is, it would then be similar to what many other middle school teachers do. And so I understand that, that we don't want to do that. All of that said, I mean, and I'm saying that in defense of my team because I, I just don't want anybody out there thinking that we're intentionally trying to create new and interesting ways to abuse teaching staff. That's not our goal. Um, all of that said, I think we, loud and clear, and, um, could I just ask? There, I assume there will be no objection if we pull this off the action agenda for next week and we just take, move it and go forward? We okay with that? Okay, so that's what we're going to do. We're going to pull it off the action agenda, so there won't be any further conversation about this particular model. Understand, we will be monitoring the staffing issues as we head into the new year and, uh, try to fill those, which we'll have a lot of information about this year as we, because, you know, we start our staffing season in earnest now. And we'll come back if we need to, to have conversations about other ways we might address this, um, to include some of the stuff that we've talked about tonight.
Thank you. So I hope you'll indulge the chair a moment for the time she put into responding to these emails to just make my, my, I guess, few comments. Uh, the, the, the high school schedule, because we did just vote on a, a major change at the high school level. Um, it, it was a staff member who helped remind me that conversation's been ongoing for quite a few years. Uh, at least two retreats, it was discussed and, and X number of workshops. So I think this kind of piggybacks on Dr. Spence's comment that, and we don't have to decide this now, but the governance committee is seeking, uh, input for the summer retreat, that maybe it would be worthy of a, of a retreat discussion at some level. Um, not, not to suggest us, so that's, that's the reason why I'm very thankful to. I think that, that it was important to point out to re, to not just chuck it. It's the, it's respecting the work of, of the team and the staff that we, by saying we revisit, it's, that that's different from kicking it down the road. That's having a clear plan moving forward on what additional questions or concepts we want to consider. So I'll end it there. Okay.
Hey, I appreciate the initiation.
We're, we're trying to, unless, is there something to add or we're moving on?
I just had a question. I had a question, just a, a quick one. So is there a way to actually provide, um, like a contract class in, in, in terms of, like, if there was a specific class that needed, um, to be filled specifically? Like, I, I can tell you, I know three or four teachers that have left the teaching profession that still are licensed, that might come back and, and fill a class at, you know, ten o'clock in the morning or something. I'm not sure, is that even an option to have a class where you can kind of contract, like, provide it out as an independent contract for that semester?
So yes, we have what's called a TEA, which is a temporary employment agreement. And we do that now. And we certainly encourage anybody who wants to come back and teach. I mean, they've got to pay attention to VRS and the VRS rules. But if they understand those and they want to come back under a temporary agreement, we certainly encourage them to contact Human Resources.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, then, we will proceed to our final information item of the evening. And then we have our speakers still waiting. Uh, so that's a reminder. Uh, so, uh, we, we left it with, it was Mrs. Williams who had additional questions from Mr. Freeman. As I said, Mrs. Lynetti had offered to just give another recap of the, of the two recent legal, uh, rulings. So, um, I'm trying to decide which order makes the most sense here.
Yeah, I'll just email Mr. Freeman.
Okay. Okay.
With my questions.
All right. Then, Mrs. Lanetti, would you be kind enough to come and just repeat here in this formal meeting setting, the information you shared on the two very recent court and judge rulings?
Yes, ma'am. Camille Lanetti, School Board Legal Counsel. As I mentioned, the last four or five days, we've had a lot of activity on the legal front involving the mask mandate issues. The first case to be filed was the case against Chesapeake. The parents in Chesapeake, the bottom lawsuit against the Chesapeake School Board, the governor, various state officials, the Chesapeake superintendent. It was a particular kind of action. The parents in that case were seeking either a writ of mandamus or a writ of prohibition. I talked with the school board about this a few weeks ago when the council school attorneys was looking at it, decided, very sorry, that that was not the vehicle we thought was probably the best way to do it, is an unusual procedure to do this. So, the school attorneys decided, when they were looking at whether they want to file lawsuits, and you mentioned all the lawsuits that came into the Arlington Circuit Court, to take a different tax. But the parents that brought the lawsuit in Chesapeake were seeking, again, the writ of mandamus, writ of prohibition. It went to the Supreme Court, again, an unusual move, went to the Virginia Supreme Court. The Virginia Supreme Court did not issue its decision until yesterday. So what the Virginia Supreme Court looked at that particular case and it said, basically, the procedure you've used will not work under these circumstances because to issue a writ of mandamus, you have to be able to tell a government agency, you need to be able to, you are required to do an action that the law requires you to do. If there's any discretion in the decision to use that action, you cannot use this procedure called a writ of mandamus. And that's what the Virginia Supreme Court said, that you cannot force the governor to do a particular action because he has discretion when he puts out executive orders that he thinks are appropriate. Also, they looked and said, the school board of Virginia, City of Virginia, sorry, school board of the City of Chesapeake also has discretion in how it implements SB 1303 and how it decides it's going to do that. So therefore, the court said, you cannot use this procedure, writ of mandamus, to try to force the school board to do what you want it to do. Now, what was interesting in that particular decision, when they talked about it, again, it's a very limited decision, don't read it too far out of where we're explaining, but there was a final comment that they put in here. The court said, "By allowing school boards to follow the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's recommended COVID-19 mitigation strategies to the maximum extent practical, SB 1303 necessarily gives the boards a degree of discretion to modify or even forego these strategies as they deem appropriate for their individual circumstances. With respect to the implementing policies on student masking, the discretion persists even if EO2's masking exemption provisions are unlawful." Some citations in there. And it concludes with, "Accordingly, the school board has license to decide whether or when its power under SB 1303 should be exercised. Mandamus does not lie to compel the school board's action under the statute. Long tactical decision," but it's very interesting that we see this language in the Supreme Court saying, "School boards, you have the right to decide, SB 1303, how you're going to apply the CDC recommendations and you don't have to, you can choose whether you want to apply all of them or any of them." What they noted in the Supreme Court said in this particular decision is they were not going to rule on whether the governor's EO2, Executive Order 2, was legal or not. They didn't need to get to that. They said, this procedure's not appropriate. But this extra language has put a new twist on suggesting where the Supreme Court might come down on this issue. Now, if I go back to what happened in the Arlington case, there were seven school districts that filed a lawsuit and ended up going to the Arlington Circuit Court and they were challenging, again, the governor's order. It was a different legal method to do this. They were seeking a declaratory judgment. A declaratory judgment is asking the court to rule legally on what an issue is, explain what, help us understand what the law is. They were also seeking a temporary injunction. They wanted to stop the governor from enforcing Executive Order 2. The governor then counterclaimed with his own challenges to it, also seeking a temporary injunction. That hearing was last Wednesday. About four o'clock on Friday, the judge issued her initial opinion on this. And again, this opinion had to do with a temporary injunction. So it's an early stage in the lawsuit, seeking to enjoin it. It's a temporary decision. And there are four elements you go through for, looking for, how you imply an injunction. One of the things that was really interesting about this is the court made one particular statement here saying that the single issue before the court is whether the governor, via his emergency powers, can override the decision of local school boards delegated to them under SB 1303. On this pivotal issue, the court concludes that the governor cannot. So according to the initial decision the court is making here is that she does not believe that the governor can override with the Executive Order 2. Goes on to talk about that, some of the decision, looking at how you analyze an injunction. They also pointed out that it does not follow the governor, even in an emergency, can direct the school boards to ignore the General Assembly's deference to CDC guidance and to abandon their considered determination about what is practical regarding these mitigation strategies. So the judge at this point granted the school board's temporary injunction as to Executive Order 2. And so the court is saying right there that she believes at this point that she thinks the school boards are probably correct in their analysis, but she will take that up later on when there's a full evidentiary hearing. The problem for us looking at that is the judge has also directed the counsel who argued the case to come back with the final order on the temporary injunction. So it is unclear at this time if she is going to extend that injunction to all of the State of Virginia or simply limit it to the governor's ability to enforce the executive order in just those seven school districts that are out there. So we're kind of still in this quagmire for law issues at the moment. But what I find very interesting about these two opinions is that the Virginia Supreme Court has very clearly said that it doesn't matter whether the executive order is lawful or not. You school boards have the right to determine what you think's appropriate and what 1303 has granted you discretion. It also seems to be in a different manner what the Arlington Circuit Court also said, is we're going to look at, one, the Circuit Court initially does not think that the governor's executive order has the power to override the authority that has been granted to you as a school board. And she's also echoing the fact that she believes that you have the right as a school board to make a determination as how you want to implement 1303. Again, the Chesapeake case is done. It has been dismissed. There is a way they could possibly bring it back against other parties. I don't know that that's going to happen. The Arlington cases are going to go forward, so we'll probably see further decisions on that. I am aware of other lawsuits that are being filed. In fact, I announced that the governor and the attorney general have joined on to Loudoun County's suit that parents have brought, where parents were challenging whether they could put students out who were not allowed in the school without a mask. So there are a couple of different things going on. I do anticipate other lawsuits coming out. So I cannot tell you at this time the matter's resolved. But they're very interesting developments for us in Virginia to start understanding what the authority of SB 1303 is.
Okay, thank you for that recap again. Anybody, Mrs. Hughes and Mrs. Manning?
So, I actually do have some leftover from before and some that I want to address here. One of the things that we were kind of at the end of was talking about teachers telling children they're proud of their mask. And of course, the comment you made is you're letting them know they're kind. There are kind people who wear masks. There are unkind people who wear masks. And the same can be said of people who don't. So I think that skewing things to, you know, kind of push your agenda there is not a good thing. A lot of this is clearly agenda-based. I mean, we wear masks in class when you might have 30 students, but if it's an after-school activity in the same room where there's only 10 students, then you have to wear one. There's no logic there. We know that unvaccinated people spread the virus just as easily as vaccinated, yet we're not testing everybody. We're picking and choosing. And that's not just here. That's a lot of places. So none of this is really logic-based. And everybody is looking for a way to keep these children masked. And, you know, I look at SB 1303, which passed, looks like January of 2020, well, it was introduced in January. So it passed in the session in February. Yet when I submitted a resolution for us to make masks optional in August, nobody said, 1303's in place, we can't do that. Everybody said, let's wait to see if anything comes out before school starts. And not even the governor, but it was the Health Commissioner who put out an order in August. And that's what y'all based your decision on. So you seem to not put a lot of weight on 1303 then, but the order was the thing. Now that there's a different order and you don't like it, now 1303 is what you're basing your decisions on. So the governor's orders are no less valid than the former Health Commissioner's orders. And there's no reason for these children to be masked anymore. We've not even had one person come in here and present a peer-reviewed study showing that masks are effective. We've had children sitting here in these cloth masks for two years and everybody in this room knows they're not effective. It's, if children want a mask, if their parents want them to mask, let them wear a mask. And if they don't, they don't. And as far as this being 14%, I have had parents say, my child doesn't want to wear a mask, but asked me not to write something because they don't want to stand out. And then there are some that do, but that's not my choice. That's those parents' choices. And if a child is not wearing a mask when their parents want them to and the parent asks, tell them. Let the parent deal with that. It should not be up to us to decide that they need to do this. This is long past due and you just need to stop. Stop looking for ways to construe the law to do what you want to do when it's the wrong thing to do.
So I will say the point of this follow-up conversation was to add more clarity to these court and judge rulings, which people do put stock in. And Mrs. Lanetti, to be clear, it's the reach of these decisions that right now is still subject, up for just pending.
To be clear, it is not clear at this time.
And I think that needs to be said because we have a lot of lawyers out there all of a sudden in the city. And honestly, if the, I mean, if those in the know don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, make that clear. I think that's one message we have to get out of here. And whatever our leanings are, we're not looking for reasons. We're just looking for the answer or the, what the decision is so then we can go from there. I think that's a fair.
You will not, at this time, have a good decision. What I find interesting about the case is that you're starting to see some development in the areas we've not been clear about. And I do think it's going to confirm your ability to make the decisions. But if you're looking for an immediate court response, I don't think so. You're going to see that. And I do warn you, you may see these things change in the next couple of weeks. I do think what the courts are telling you is that you do have the authority to make the decisions you think are appropriate. And I think that will probably end up being the final decisions in this area is that you, if you are looking at what is appropriate for your school division, you are probably going to be backed up on that as long as you're making a decision you think is appropriate based on the data you have for your school division. But I cannot tell you when that final answer is going to come down.
So that's what I think needed to be clarified for this evening. Mrs. Franklin? Oh, I'm sorry. I was, Mrs. Manning, Mrs. Anderson?
So, I believe even the attorney general quoted the Supreme Court's opinion that stated that SB 1303 does not mandate masks. So that seems pretty clear. That doesn't seem to be, you know.
What the Supreme Court said is you have the discretion to choose what you want to choose.
But it also said that SB 1303 does not mandate masks.
No, it does not say that. But what it says is you have the discretion to decide what you think is appropriate for, to choose what part of the CDC recommendations you want to have.
Okay, I'll pull it up, but I'm pretty sure I read that that's what that said. But in a separate section from that. But all of this may be moot anyway because it does look like the General Assembly is going to be passing bipartisan legislation that states that masks must be optional for children. And it could, and according to this article in Richmond Times, it could go into effect as early as February 21st because there's no, the former speaker got rid of the four-fifths clause, the emergency clause, and they never reinstated it. So Governor Youngkin can sign this into law as soon as it passes the House of Delegates.
And that is obviously a strong possibility. That obviously will back any decisions you make. I do think you would be justified in continuing with the decision that you've made you think's appropriate. I think the courts will back you on that. And I think you will see the General Assembly producing some other information out there. And that's coming. So I'm comfortable with you making the decision you think is appropriate this time period. And I would not at this time advise you to do anything different than what you've already decided. But I think either way you go, you will be backed up by the law eventually if we get a final court ruling out of this.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Franklin, and then hopefully we can move on.
I'm not going to sit here tonight and waste everybody's time about arguing whether we should wear a mask or the students shouldn't wear a mask. I think the public knows where most of us stand on that. We've argued it for almost two years. What I will say is that the reason why I asked for this to be put back on the agenda for information was so that Ms. Lanetti could give a clarification on where we stand now and how the judges have made these rules. And I think the biggest thing that has come out of this is it is going to be clarified that school boards get to make the decisions for their localities. And that's what's important. That's what our Virginia Constitution says, that school boards are the ones who make the decisions for their localities. So, but I just, I just wanted to clarify that. And, you know, I don't think we should take the time tonight to argue back and forth and say, oh, this one says that and this one says that and, you know. I just feel like sometimes we're just trying to debate things back and forth just so that we can throw other people under the bus. And that's not what tonight is all about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Franklin?
Actually, Ms. Manning actually had already just mentioned that. But someone just did send me an article that just stated that the Virginia legislator, you know, makes a bipartisan move. So I was, again, just reiterating some of the things that I had mentioned earlier as, you know, until we figure out what is happening and, you know, instead of doing this political ping pong that we just, you know, see what happens, stay the course and allow things to move within the General Assembly and the courts and then make a decision based on that. Thank you.
Okay, I think that leads us to getting back to the speaker component of the program. Madam Clerk? Yes, we can do that. We'll be returning to our online speakers. Our speaker will be Gina Lane. Please unmute. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a teacher and parent in VP CPS. Currently, the VDH website states that we're in a high level of transmission for COVID in Virginia Beach with a 25% positivity and a seven-day average of cases, 190. Thank goodness these numbers are coming down, but this still is considered a level of high transmission. The VDH states that masks are recommended for everyone two years and older when indoors and the CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to K through 12 schools regardless of vaccination status. I'm asking you to follow the guidelines set forth by the VDH and the CDC and require universal masking for all students in our schools without an opt-out at this time. I'm also asking you to set parameters that we follow for when we need to require universal masking and for when it's safe, optional masking. You, the school board, have the right to make this decision. And until now, you've always followed the science and the guidelines set forth. I don't understand why we are stopping that now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joanne Alena. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I know it's late. I really appreciate you all staying up. I'm Joanne Waters Alena. I'm the mother of two VP CPS students at the same elementary school where I started my academic career. That led me to William &amp; Mary, a master's in public health at Johns Hopkins, and ultimately a PhD in epidemiology at UNC Chapel Hill. So I can address the school board member who said we haven't seen any peer-reviewed literature. I'll point you to Liang 2020 in Nature Medicine and I can give you a host of other peer-reviewed research that will speak to the science. But I'm not here to talk to you tonight as an epidemiologist. I'm here as a mother and you have a really difficult decision ahead. As we've seen tonight, passions are running deep and are real on both sides. Unfortunately, the children, teachers, and school staff are the ones who are caught in the middle. Virtual school didn't work for my family. We gratefully returned. Virtual school didn't work for my family. We gratefully returned with the option of wearing masks. Masks weren't an issue for my children, just another thing to pack, like computers and water bottles in the morning, until they were given that choice. The optional mask policy put that decision back on individual students. So my six year old kindergarten is forced to make that decision, that adults are rightfully having huge trouble making themselves. Let's say he knows our family wants him to wear a mask to protect the adults he's around, but his best buddy isn't wearing one and thinks it's silly. Your teachers are too busy teaching our children to be the mask police all day. It's a bad use of their time, and they don't deserve that frustration. So now you're creating a situation where kids are being teased for wearing masks or judged for not wearing masks, and there's increased risk of transmission to those at risk staff and adults in our community. Fortunately, most children have not been severely affected by COVID. But we're part of a larger community that has been and will be continued to be affected. We have this opportunity to be part of a larger community that has and teach children that they can be do their part to reduce transmissions to vulnerable populations, beloved grandparents, immunocompromised people with chronic conditions, those going through cancer treatment, pregnant women.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And the unvaccinated population. Masks in school aren't ideal, and I look forward to the time when we can step down the policy based on data driven metrics, which I'm happy to address. Until then, continuing masks inside the school will help protect our schools and the community they serve. I really appreciate your time and intention.
Our next speaker is not online. Number twenty two is not online. We're going to go to Margaret Slattery. Please unmute.
Welcome.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I am a parent of two Virginia Beach school children, both at two different academies. I currently have an immunocompromised student with asthma. This is my first time addressing the board, and I actually have a fear of speaking. But I did want you to hear from one of the silent eighty six percent majority that I don't think you hear enough from. And usually, we don't have to, as Virginia Beach School Board does do, I think, the right thing and errs on the right of safety. However, that's why we were so shocked at your compromise, as that was anything but that last vote. I know Virginia Beach Public Schools finally offered a virtual option, but that virtual Virginia email states that we have missed the start by almost a month, that joining mid semester is different, is difficult. No orchestra, band, et cetera, no academy, and will in fact, they will lose their spot along with no credit offered for courses not available. So thanks, but no thanks. This was not a viable option for my high achieving student that is forced to choose between his health and his studies. So instead, I had to scramble to ask for a medical five oh four for accommodations due to the conflict of the governor's EO, parent opt out with the current bipartisan pass law allowing to go in person as long as the schools adhere to the maximum extent of the CDC recommendations. The governor even said, listen to your principles, as Ms. Lanetti said. And the last lawsuit did have the judge halting the governor EO. In her ten page ruling, she agreed with the school boards that the mask mandate should stay in place while the matter continues to be worked out in court. I asked you to do the same. They said the school boards, quote, will likely succeed. What you've done as Virginia Beach, trying to follow the bipartisan law and now halted EO, doesn't work.
Forty seconds.
Parents had to choose. They were supposed to opt out. However, kids have been choo- choosing as admin told teachers were not allowed to ask or enforce masking. This is devolved into not parent choice, but student choice. This is a problem, not just for immunocompromised students like mine, but teachers and community. Grandmothers live with students, parents with cancer, siblings unable to get vaccinated.
And that is time.
One hundred percent masking. Thank you.
Our next speaker was asked to be moved from in person to online. So Sarah Clark, please unmute.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm a parent of a student in VBCPS, and I'm asking that you stand up for vulnerable kids whose parents are being forced into choosing between a virtual option that robs them of the same in person educational opportunities as others and keeping them in school but putting their families at risk. Rather than asking families to continue masking because it's inconvenient to them, you have chosen to ask families with health and safety concerns to disrupt their children's education. It's not too late to do what's right. Please institute a mask policy that includes mandatory masking when transmission rates are high. Thank you.
Our last speaker came on and off before Molly Grasso. Please unmute.
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Molly Grasso, and I'm the mother to five young children, three future students and two current students at Virginia Beach Public Schools. I am also the wife of a critical care physician who, for over the past nearly two years now, has provided our family with a very devastating firsthand perspective of just how bad COVID can be. I am speaking tonight to voice my support for the return to mandatory masking. I'm not a scientist, so I'm not here to deliver any groundbreaking statistics or new research. As you already know, the scientific and medical communities unequivocally support masking in schools. I'm not an attorney, so I have no argument to make about how this school board can legally override the governor's executive order, although several other districts in the Commonwealth have managed to successfully navigate the same scenario and continue masking. I am speaking tonight as a mother and a voter for who the vast majority of this pandemic has been extremely appreciative of a level headed and data informed approach that the district took in regards to mitigating the risks of COVID to our children. When the red, yellow, green metrics were established in the Fall 2020 Plan, I was thankful that there was a system that took into account community transmission levels and used that to determine if our children could safely attend school face to face. We happily, although somewhat nervously, sent our children back face to face when the metrics allowed it in the early fall. And we were saddened but understanding when the children had to return to virtual later that same fall. I was also thankful when Dr. Spence, in a message sent to parents on January twenty fifth of last year, used the ever evolving science and newly verified studies to send our children back into the school buildings, moving beyond the old metric system because that is what the science indicated. And experts said that it was what was best for children and could be done safely. Thankfully, that has proven true. So I was somewhat shocked and incredibly disappointed when in the midst of the largest surge of the pandemic, you, the formerly very prudent leadership of our district, determined that executive order number two tied your hands, and masks were made optional in schools. Tonight, I humbly ask for you to return to your formerly admirable modus operandi of following the guidance of experts in health and science to determine what happens in New Virginia Beach schools and not politicians who are placating a vocal sector that voted for them. I don't believe that masks should or need to be here forever. I would hope that you will reinstate the mandate for now and then work to develop a new science based metric in a plan that will provide an exit strategy from pandemic necessitated mitigations. I hope that as we see the virus decline, the transition to post COVID normalcy will happen smoothly and in a way that makes our community confident that all the changes are being made safely. Transitions can be very stressful for many children, and our kids deserve a smooth, science based off ramp from the pandemic, not a trap door on a political stage. Thank you very much for your time.
Madam Chair, that was our last online speaker for this evening. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, that leads us to the consent agenda as amended. I'll read the remaining items. Well, we have a resolution, which once I read through the list, we'll we'll return back to have the resolution read. But a resolution for Black History Month, the Princess Anne Middle School Pump Station. And then D or the policy rev- what was D? The Policy Review Committee Recommendations presented earlier to this board in in information. Policy three eleven, Budget Surplus Funds. Two, Policy three four three, Fiscal Responsibility of Administrators for Individual Accounts. Three, Policy three dash four five, Inventories. Four, Policy three dash five seven, Safety Hazard Communication Program. Five, Policy three dash five eight slash safety hazardous hazardous waste containment disposal. Six is Policy three dash five nine, Safety Asbestos Abatement. Seven is Policy three six six, Environmental Barriers Slash Accessibility. And finally, eight, Policy three six seven, Environmentally Sustainable Practices. All right, so could we read the resolution at this time? Yes, Madam Chair.
Resolution for Black History Month, February twenty twenty two. Whereas African American history is recognized across the USA and Canada in February every year and highlights the accomplishments and contributions of African, African American, Pan African people, and whereas the twenty twenty two theme, Black Health and Wellness, acknowledges the legacy of not only black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine, but also the other ways of knowing, for example, birth workers, midwives, herbalists, and throughout the African diaspora. And whereas African Americans have forged a proud legacy that reflects the spirit of our nation and community. For example, Dr. Eldy Britt, an African American professor and chairman of surgery at Eastern Virginia Medical School, born, raised in Hampton Roads. Virginia was elected to the National Academy of Medicine, formerly the Institute of Medicine, and Dr. Britt was first and only faculty member from his institution to receive his distinction, considered one of the highest honors in the field of health and medicine. And whereas it is imperative for the good of our nation that schools continue to build awareness and understanding of African American role models who commitments and achievement embody the American spirit and pursuit of exacy- excellence like Dr. Britt, and acknowledge the contributions made by African Americans despite struggles from freedom and equity. And whereas the school board of the City of Virginia Beach, through its core values emphasizes the importance of value differences within our school division, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognize the month of February twenty twenty two as Black History Month and its theme, Black History and Wellness. And it will and be it further resolved, the school board of City of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate in the various school and community activities that highlight black history, not only during February, but also throughout the entire year. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across official minutes of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. All right, so motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mrs. Ms. Owens, a second. Mrs. Anderson, all in favor, show a raised hand, please. Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. Thank you. So now the action portion of the agenda, the personnel report and administrative appointments, motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs, a second. Ms. Owens, any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Please show your approval with a raised hand. Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you, Dr. Spence. Any you do have something to share. Thank you.
I do. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Like to recognize Gillian Lauber. Ms. Lauber has served with distinction as a teacher in New York. She's been a behavioral specialist in North Carolina. She's taught in North Carolina, also in Norfolk Public Schools, and and here in Virginia Beach at Pembroke Elementary School, and most recently has been serving as an administrative assistant at Pembroke Elementary School. And we're very pleased that tonight you've accepted our recognize our recommendation for her to serve as the next assistant principal at Sea Tech Elementary School, the Achievable Dream Academy. Thank you. Congratulations to her.
To her. Maybe maybe she'll wake up to the news of the board approval.
I bet she's watching.
As always, we wish her the best. All right, committee organization. Madam Chair, we need to go back to the two items that we polled for action. Oh, wait, no, no, we have to vote on this yet. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, so motion to approv- we, Mrs. Anderson. Did we do the motions already? I'm sorry.
Could you all turn your mics on for a couple of things?
Okay. And a second.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the general contractor for Plaza Middle School stage rigging and Rosemont Forest Elementary School fire alarm replacement.
This this was the item that was repositioned in the agenda. Okay. And a second, Ms. Owens. Okay. All in favor, show a raised hand, please. Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. All right, all opposed, show a raised hand. Any and any abstentions, show a raised hand. And we have one abstention with Ms. Hughes.
And I'm abstaining because I'm related to somebody who works for the architect.
Thank you. So the motion did pass with ten ayes, no nays, and one abstention. Thank you. All right, so now on to the committee organization or board reports. Who would like to start? Mrs. Riggs.
Okay, for the Sisters of the East Youth Ambassador Gala, it is going to be the twenty second of April, and it's going to be at the Zider. We're also including an art contest show as well between the eighth, ninth, and tenth and eleventh grades, so that information is coming out as well. But we're looking forward to it. We're just going to plan it, and hopefully we can continue on with these plans. And nothing will change. So we're looking very much forward to it this year.
Thank you. Who else had a hand raised? Mrs. Franklin?
So we just had a gifted community advisory council meeting last night, and we had a great workshop at the request of some of the other committee members who also wanted to know about executive functioning, which can be used for all children, not just gifted children. The committee engaged in great discussion and next steps, which will be include putting together a panel of gifted teachers. All parents across the district will have an opportunity to engage in the workshop as well, which I would highly recommend. I actually mentioned that looking at some of the skills, I could probably use some of the skills with my sales team as well as as well to up our game at work. So parents, look out for more information about this in the third quarter. It will be a really useful resource for you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Melnick.
The Audit Committee will resume their meetings this month. Just a note that the January meeting was canceled due to illness of an administrator, and so we will pick back up this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Governance, I alluded to it earlier, but this is the time of year where we begin to seek input for our summer retreat. So just asking board members to reach out to me or any of the other governance committee members with any suggestions. And if you want to talk about it, pick up the phone and and Dr. Spence is doing likewise with with staff. And the other point, I thought I would take this opportunity because it is a governance committee matter, and it speaks to one of the speakers earlier. And I I I really feel compelled to clarify with respect to the development of the new legal office. This board approved the hiring of outside counsel to assist with this process. So it's outside counsel who's ultimately responsible for these job descriptions and the employee contracts. Now, obvious for obvious reasons, and HR is obviously involved. And so for obvious reasons, Mrs. Lanetti would be a liaison in certain cases. So I just thought that was important to clarify. Any other committee reports? Ms. Owens? Ms. Owens?
Thank you, and this isn't actually a a report from the committee, but uh feel like it's relevant uh to the Mental Health Task Force. Just wanted to acknowledge that this week is National School Counseling Week. It's February seventh through eleventh. Uh and the focus, uh the goal is to focus public attention on the unique contributions of school counselors within the US school system, and it's always celebrated the first week in February. So thank you to our school counselors for all the things that they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.